9 o'clock, so we'll call a work session. So Sandy put together a hand and dandy. This is an overview for us to walk through. And what I'm thinking we might want to do is really just go through these blue questions. And I asked Sandy them upon the slides that everyone in the audience can see what questions we're actually trying to answer.
And I put them in a little bit different order in the slides. Just because I think it'd be easier to keep the conversation going by putting them on here, after you play, put them on paper.
Whether it's all children at home, in the audience, I think our first kind of thing that we're going to try to tackle is looking at the annual grants that typically come in during your budget cycle. And seeing what kind of structure guidelines you want to put around those, including coming into this current budget cycle here in the next couple of months. First question, what are the county's goals, priorities for the annual expenditures of the wind energy SIP, economic enhancement, economic development, and general fund allocations? Who wants to start?
We haven't had a work session yet.
Are facilitated.
Yeah.
Right, yeah, that's the big question.
That'll happen. So I hope we can still though, I mean, I'm happy to start the discussion.
Okay.
My sense, where I would like to go with these funds is I want to make sure that we are leaving a long-term lasting impact with our investments. So I want to make sure that we are prioritizing things like infrastructure that's going to be able to support long-term sustainability and long-term growth for us. And want to be supporting economic development projects that again, I think we're going to, basically what I want to make sure is that when the SIP funds run out, that we don't look around and say, okay, what did we slip it on after? I want us to be able to point to things and say, we need strategic investments that position our county to be stronger long-term. And so to me, sort of critical infrastructure that we're identifying, economic development, sort of improving, removing barriers to especially young people, alumni returning home. So to me, that's housing, that's fiber, that's, I don't know. So that's kind of where my head is. I know traditionally we, and we'll sort of get into, I think, this whole issue of funding operation costs for some of the organizations we've supported and how we want to handle that, but I really want, from my end, I want to leave this saying that we use these funds to make strategic investments that make us stronger because of it here. So that's my two cents.
That was the question that I had, that I didn't have a chance to look at last night because it got in this morning and I was like, oh, scrambling. But how many of the, do you know, just right off the hand, how many of last year's budget committee type funding requests were for operating?
Were what?
Were strictly operating, were for operating expenses?
I think just about all of them.
That's more than forty.
I thought it was a good number, but.
So I think it was more than not, but I don't have my exact number.
The school districts.
Arlington, childcare, I was in preschool, Conne, childcare, county fire services, Arlington School was kind of a mix, Conne Schools all operating, Arlington Library, Arlington Health, Conne Food Factory, Boshe Extension, Port of Arlington Projects, Gillum, PCDC, and Summer Springs Village. So really, the ones that weren't were the South Gillum Health Center, which was partially operations and partially, the majority was to redo the dentists part of the clinic. Arlington College Schools did, redid their roof.
The sports projects.
Sports projects, USDA, well, my services, that was to be the trapper, so I guess that's operational. PCDC, that's, well, that's operational, not part of it. For example, how it's supposed to separate. So yeah, most of it is operational funding.
I mean, even some of them aren't, but it's kind of which box you put it in. So in a sense, if they didn't have the funding, it would have not been. I think during the budget meeting, I mean, the thing that sticks out to me is there's this discussion, I don't, it probably wasn't captured, but it's, but basically it was about creating zombies. Maybe I could put the word zombies in there, but I don't think so. I think the word zombie is actually used. And I, you know, it's a good analogy because you've got these little entities that, you know, they're a part of our community. I mean, I used to child here, here in Arlington, and without it, I'd be lost. But at the same time, I mean, yeah, they don't bring it up forever, they really keep themselves running, so. There's zombies. It would be nice if they did, but I don't know. Given the way things run, I don't know if it came, and I think that's my issue with all this. It's important we have these services, but at the same time, they don't generate anything other than service. But it's, you need it because people, you know, workplace management or work, like I work for house, right? So without that, there's no way to take care of my kids essentially. Like, very well, if they worked, that'd be fun. Let's not forget.
Here's me.
And the thing for me is, you know, like I would anticipate we'll get into, and I don't know if it's the next question or you said a question about whether we should cut off operating expenses or not. I don't think, I don't think, I'm not anticipating that we would be cutting off people who have been on this long term. I mean, I don't think any of us wants to send the letter saying, basically, but I also think there's a reality here, which is there's a sunset on these funds. And we are, we are helping these folks survive for a period of time, but if we aren't also encouraging them to put in plans that make them sustainable without us, when these funds dry up, we're going to have, I mean, I think we loaned out, or granted out 2.5 million dollars. That's a lot of money that if they don't start putting in place plans now, we're going to have, what, 10 entities come up and say that they can't keep their doors open. So I mean, I think we'll get into some sustainability later, but I, that is my concern and why I feel like we need to be strategic about how we purchase, because I think, I really do worry about what happens on year six, when everybody comes in and there's not enough money to go around and people haven't put in place plans to make them sustainable. It's because I support the community, or these organizations, that I think we have to be a little bit more, put some guardrails on what kinds of operational expenses that we're giving and help then sort of step down the amount that they need from us year after year.
Well, and part of that too is us helping them find that path.
Yeah.
Getting them help with a little structure in their budgets to comping, bringing that help them figure that out too.
I mean, I have that one more directly than what the province commissioners have, yeah. Yeah, some of them don't really, I'd say their budgeting process is, I don't know what the right term is, informal, informal.
Informal, that's right.
And.
We need to give them the truth, actually, not to give the tools.
Yeah, just do it to understand, because they don't even exactly understand what's going on in their own entity, let alone, and they're small, I mean, I get it, but you know, accounting is a huge expense. You look at the county, right, it's a huge expense. But when somebody comes, you say, where'd the money go? I tell you, plenty from that. I'm not sure that all them, and it's not a dishonesty thing, it is a trust issue, it's just hard to make any sort of plan, like, oh, so spend funds on.
And how many, how many of these entities, I wonder, realize that this is a limited lucky pool that we're talking about? Or they just think that they're going to be on compassion?
I mean, I started when I, when people asked me to sit in on their different board meetings and things like that, I started talking about that piece sunset, and the look on their faces suggests to me that they do not realize that it's not endless.
And it was discussed, I mean, as of, let's say, six years ago, it was discussed in meetings like this, but I mean, if you look at the public attendance, we have three members of the public here, and.
And it's the only thing.
Yeah, they're, they're in probably anyway, and I'm sure the Port of Arlington's got to figure it out, it's still a trial and error.
Yeah, but I mean, most of the entities that would be affected.
Right, so.
And that's why you kind of put on your, you know, strategic reserves and endowments as part of your thinking, your decision-making is, well, how much of this do we want to set aside for future years, and how much do we want to give out every year?
I mean, I, you know, I don't, I kind of run the gamut on this whole thing, I thought about this for four years. I run the gamut from, hey, let's give them a discounted amount today, just say, here, this is it, this ought to give you a cash stream of what you've been getting, and let them run with it, and just see what happens, to maybe we're better money managers and we should take care of the funds and hold out year to year. So I really have to run the gamut, and my challenge with the first thing is, hey, here's your discounted cash flow with some risk penalty, yada, yada, is, yeah, for not getting managed three years from now, they're back, hey, you know, that money. And then you have to have the stomach to say, you know, what we gave it to you upfront, sorry, but I don't know if we have the stomach to do that. I mean, ultimately, they're part of our community, so.
They are who they are.
Right, but then the other side, you have the zombie thing, so.
I mean, I think what I would like to see is, so out of this list, I would like to see us focus on infrastructure, livability, quality of life, which may include some of these operating kinds of things, which it probably does, economic development. And then I, I'm interested, and I'm not sure if this is actually needs to be part of this discussion today, I think it's probably more of a larger budget discussion, is I would like us to see us shore up the homestead rebate and make that self-sustaining, so make the endowment large enough that it pays for itself and that it's not in danger in the future if the waste funds are in danger, anything like that, that it's, that it's paying for itself, basically. So I'd like to see that. The other thing that's been on my mind very recently is looking at our facilities needs long-term. Sherman County is very strategic about pulling that money, pulling those SIP monies aside and looking at whether their facilities really met their needs. I think there's, in our courthouse, some significant concerns about security, things like that, that would likely require significant expenditures from us, and we don't really, we haven't really been saving for that or been strategic about what that might look like. So before the money runs out, I'd like to kind of swirl some of that away in case that something we'd like to look at long-term. So that's kind of where I'm, I am. The strategic reserve, I mean, I think we can, we can put some stuff, maybe some funds away, but again, I worry that if all we're doing is prolonging the inevitable for people who are using this for operating cash, like, there's only so much you can reserve before, again, we're just where we are again. So we're just prolonging the inevitable, which is that at some point, there's not going to be the support there from the county for operational funds. And so when, as we progress from the conversation, I'm going to be talking a lot about, like, how do we make these guys sustainable, what are the requirements that we put in place to show that we're moving towards sustainability, all of those things, because I think it will, the fact that they're not here in particular concerns me because this is, for a lot of them, their main source of funding. And so I'm a little surprised that we're talking about putting guardrails and expectations on those funds and that they're not here to weigh in, to be honest, so.
Which tells us that they don't understand the whole process and work, we're just bank, but also get more money from the bank. And maybe we need to, we hope this was going to be our last, but even if, even if we do create a funding, maybe we also need a work session where me and Mike, representative of each one of those things, so we can help ask them what their needs are and find out how to get them and make their communities sustainable. Just talking about them and not to them.
Yeah. Yeah, and I would anticipate that we, we need to be showing up to their board meetings after we kind of have some idea of what it is we want to do and being proactive about saying, here's what's going to be changing, that you need to be aware of, so that people aren't caught off guard, that, and again, I don't want to scare anybody, I don't think we're pulling out the rug underneath people, this is just a reality of.
With a longer plan.
We can't distribute funds that we're not receiving, so as soon as we stop receiving funds, we don't have anything to distribute, so. So yeah, that's on our, what we want to see the funds spent on them, because I'm sure while they get more into operational expenses later, but.
Yeah, there's a little stuff in there.
I think, I think my priorities were pretty much whatever yours were as well, as far as the top three.
Right.
Definitely.
So the liability.
And infrastructure together, and our housing issue is to me a big deal.
Yes, and then economic development, okay. All right, so I think we captured that, and then any other strategic reserves and endowments, I think maybe that's just a better discussion to have when the full budget committees meeting, and whether we want to, you know, start by making investments in those and then debating out what's left for community grants. Good, good, ready to go on to the next one?
I don't want to show it off. Really, this one was just sort of intended to highlight that we're giving out a lot of money every year, you know, 39 grants, over $3 million last year, and then guess I'll add that, listen, I'll show you. We're sort of, and I wanted to on there, most of it, because we can kind of fall into the strap and talk about the SIP funds, but it's not all SIP funds, and it's not all SIP lineups, and so just keeping that in mind, and.
I guess it's your first joke.
So some of it is SIP funds, it moved into other places, but.
The economic development fund, where do those funds come from?
Host fees, it's probably the economic development ordinance. So really, your, your funding streams are really pretty evenly split into three legs, host fees, SIP funds, and tax revenues. Truth of the matter is, as far as tax revenues we get to keep instead of distributing to the districts, it's about that amount, $3 million bucks.
Well, can you repeat the third one, host fees, SIP funds?
Tax revenues that aren't distributed to districts, because we take in all the tax money for everybody, and then I distribute it to the districts every month. So the port, for being an example, the port gets a check from me every month, that's their tax distribution, it's their portion of the property taxes, excuse me.
But most of that comes in one big chunk.
Most of it comes in November, so if you really looked at our budget, we have deficit spending until November, we actually spend more money than we take in. So there's a whole quarter, a whole quarter of our budget, you know, we have to have enough reserves basically to pay all our bills for three months, but that's just a catch in the thing, I got that. But the point, I mean, that $3 million, it's, it's actually a significant amount of money to us, I mean, that's. Right.
What?
Always watch out for us.
If one might just talk a little bit, the economic development funds that come out of the host fees, it's about 17% of the host fee budget, if I remember the number correctly, but it's a, it's an actual line item that those funds are supposed to be appropriated for economic development. And so even though it's a grant, there is a relationship between Port and County Court on Port bill and economic development for the port. Traditionally, what we have done for has been use those funds for only projects. We don't, it's not for administrative costs, we're carrying out our role as economic officer for the county. So even though you have it posted here as a grant, it's really an allocation during that year for economic development. I would just raise it up a little differently, it does kind of cross.
It's still a grant, because we can change the ordinance, I mean, the county courts agreed, agreed to distribute it.
Right.
But I'd say, that's your point, I mean, it's not part of the, it's not part of the normal grant process particularly.
And traditionally, what it's been, you know, it's the, the port has got a portion of that economic development funds, and then both day here centers, in the north and south end, have gotten it, and that's been the predominant use of those, that particular cluster of dollars.
Okay, so I don't think we have any, do we have, we don't really have this.
No, that was more of a just reminder, yeah.
Do I have any questions or things that you want, or are seeing to go for?
Not yet. Oh, I have a chance, but I'm not even sure what I got this. I know, but I, like I say, I, this is all so new to me that I'm not sure what my questions are, so.
Well, some of them I can answer, as we go along.
That's fine. I'm hoping to glean as much knowledge as possible from this work session today, so.
So this is more of just another explanatory thing, is we go forward, I've got these kind of broken into two sections, one is eligibility criteria, and the other one is merit criteria. And so the differences there are talking about grants. Eligibility criteria is the criteria that you would set as to who is eligible to apply for grants, what types of applications you want to receive, you know, projects versus operational funds, and then the merit criteria, that's relating to, once you have those applications, how are you going to score them, how are you going to grade them and rank them out and make those funding decisions? So that's the difference between those.
So the eligibility is sort of the minimum cut, like, must meet these minimum requirements, and then merit.
To apply.
Yeah.
And then once you have applications that meet those criteria, then you look at the merit of each one. So then we're at the eligibility criteria, which is kind of that discussion of what types of organizations do you guys feel the court should be funding for these programs?
I think, well, I've had, I've had one in the past that I wasn't, that I didn't feel was eligible, and we did it anyway, but, and that was just, and I don't know the answer to it, and I don't know what you will, both will feel about it, but that was the, you know, religious organizations or faith-based groups, I just didn't think our role was, I just didn't know about things in the two of us. That was a little mind-blowing about eligibility. The other question I have too about is, it says, one of the things in the draft says, applicant must reside and operate in Gillum County, and I'm all for operating in Gillum County, but I didn't know if we needed to specify that they decided to, sort of, something else, necessarily.
It may could be and/or, I mean, it really depends on what kind of organizations you want to fund. You know, do you want to fund, say, do you want your funding to, or be part of a child life, you know, say, do work that reduces the income, outside of, that doesn't matter. But like, this is all just draft slate, so it's all, all to be changed.
I mean, I would say, I don't know that where the applicant is from matters, as long as the project has to occur in Gillum County, if that makes sense.
Yeah, it has to.
The product, their service has to, has to occur within our, you know, law. For me, I would like to avoid having private businesses come in and ask for grants. I don't think granting is our, to private businesses, I think that gets really sticky and blurry. No, but we have had folks that have come in with economic development ideas, opening up things that would rather take grants than loans from us, and so I'd like to maybe just set a policy that we don't grant to private businesses.
I don't try to.
One thing I was thinking about on the drive over though, that, that may be worth sort of a no but, maybe in the policy, is if there is a private-public partnership, so for instance, if one of our cities, say, wants to tackle housing, and they are teaming up with a private contractor, and they've, they've got a plan together, and the public entity is putting in money, so, I'll just throw this out, the city of Conne right now is looking at a housing development on the golf course, for instance, so I don't know how, I mean, and they would structure that, but I'm just putting it out a hypothetical, that the city put in considerable amount of money, they found a contractor and brought a contractor to the table that's putting in their own money, and they wanted a third partner, for instance. I would think that if the city submits the application and has, and they're the main person, but has the contractor on the side as a third partner, that that would be something that I would hope that we would consider. And I would say that with housing, and I would also say that potentially with fiber, because I think those are the two things to me, where you might have a public-private partnership that benefits a greater community need, if that makes sense. What I want to avoid is the argument that, well, we really need a restaurant here, so you should fund a restaurant, like those individual kinds of things, but when we're talking about large-scale developments, large-scale fiber projects, those things that are going to benefit the wider community, then to me, that's worth our investment, because it gets to that longer-term infrastructure, what's left after the spend runs out.
It falls into the buckets that we just discussed, as far as housing.
Exactly. So I would think that no two private businesses as sort of the, the sort of main applicant, but that if, if one of the entities, a nonprofit, community organization, government agency, special district, school, is applying and coming to us with a project that does include a partner, that's a private partner, that as long as the main entity requesting those funds is one of, is not a private business, that we.
Consider it.
Could consider it. So what do you guys think about that? Does anybody have a partner in that?
I don't, I think in order to, we're going to show that there's some kind of a statement in this housing department, so anything that we can do to encourage development in that area, I think we need to be careful.
Short of giving a private company money.
Yeah, I would rather not be handing out money directly to a contractor, but if, but if one of the cities, for instance, is putting in considerable money to do a development, and they're partnering, and they would like us to help with extending lines.
Relationship with PCDC kind of mirrors that, right?
That's exactly what we do with PCDC.
We needed somebody to help us support housing, basically, but we're not in a position to give away. So we give a PCDC to manage, to find appropriate partner.
Or the court's another example of that.
Right.
Once you give it to the court, the court goes forth and does good with it.
Yeah, and we are just, at this point in time, discussing SIP money and the, the, the grant funding that goes through the budget process.
Yeah.
Right, which is the, which is the SIP.
Yes, the economic development, the economic enhancement.
Okay, which is also.
We're just talking about the grant requests that come in through the budget process. So rather than.
Special projects, grants for itself, and SIP funds.
So not those?
Including those.
Well, we're just going to have, we're going to have a work session specifically for the special projects.
That's just what I'm going to do.
But, but these are, you know, the, the stuff that usually goes through the budget process plus those requests that come in throughout the year back, yes.
Yeah.
Plus the stuff that, you know, the, the good idea fairer brings in throughout the year.
Right.
Yeah. So we're going to have a whole work session on, on that that we can dig into.
Okay.
Okay, so in terms of who's eligible, are we in agreement about this list? No private businesses?
Well, private businesses generally have been funneled through the loan program.
Yeah.
So hopefully they generate enough revenue that they're self-staying and can pay their loan back.
Yeah. But I will say there have been recently individuals who have maybe hinted that they would rather have a grant than a loan for private businesses. So I think it's important we set a policy. Yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't blame them, but part of the.
We don't have a policy that specifically says we don't do this. I mean, this has been a discussion, Judge Barr, I've had about, you know, the guardrails is there's not, there's not any guidance, really no RS, just specifics. I mean, basically it's our money and we want to give it to XYZ as we can. But it doesn't seem right. So if it doesn't seem like something that's, you know, agreeable to court, then why wouldn't we do that? We don't have to loan it. We could give it to them. Ultimately, it's, it is, I mean, within, within the balance of staple up, but.
Okay, so we're thinking, here's what I'm thinking. Nonprofits, community organizations, government agencies, special districts, schools. And when we're, we're saying special districts, are we also including the taxing districts as well?
Well, that is my question.
Yes, I mean, they would mostly fall under the special districts, but not all special districts are taxing districts.
Got it.
SWCDs example, they could be a taxing district, but they aren't.
They are, they never put in, right, to have a tax.
And because of compression, we don't want them to be a taxing district.
And so, and then no private business. However, if one of those entities that, that is eligible is applying with a joint project that includes a private business, as long as that entity is the main requester, that we would consider funding for that program or project. Does that sound? Any concerns about that?
Are we going to put any stipulation on whether or not they benefit, their project is going to benefit Gillum County or it's going to be operated within Gillum County or they have to reside within Gillum County?
I mean, I, I think reside is kind of a sticky wicket with some of these. And then like Community Counseling Solutions, do they actually reside in? They don't, they're in Hepner. So I would want to remove reside. I don't think that that is relevant. To me.
They'll operate, right?
Yeah, for me, I think it's sufficient to just say the project must occur within Gillum County and benefit Gillum County and will benefit Gillum County residents.
Yes, okay.
And then that's that, I mean, I think that's broad enough that we can allow people who want to invest in here that aren't necessarily headquartered here to make investments here. Let me see.
Any other, any other entity we're going to determine not to be eligible or?
I mean, I would say private businesses.
Do you want the religious?
Yeah, I just didn't know what you were, I didn't know what you guys thought.
Yeah, I totally agree with that.
My. Yeah, I agree with that. I think the one maybe small, very small, narrow caveat might be if it's a historic building that we're trying to preserve. So if it's, and I, I, there's only one in the county that I can think of and we've already granted for them, which is the Lone Rock Church. But, I mean, that would be the only thing for, for future courts maybe to consider is that if it's a historic building that we're preserving and we're, and if the project is more preserving the history of the region than actually supporting a religion, for me, I would be more open to that, but.
And we did fund them, so I was okay with that. The other thing too is it got kind of, you know, it got kind of sticky sometimes when we were talking about some of the health groups. Because we're not there located within, but you know, I think that's just something we're going to determine on, maybe on case by case we'll close to them because.
A lot of the special projects were, you know, like the senior meal site, which is housed in the church. Well, we provided the money last year to upgrade the kitchen of the church for the senior meal site. There's some learned lines there. But the church wasn't the applicant, the senior meal site was.
Was the applicant. Yeah, that to me is kind of the distinction, I think.
Maybe it's private, public, religious. Because it's a public entity, again, is the main.
Chief.
Many fish here, and we're the one.
I think that's the distinction. Because I mean, even in a stor-, well, historic building, when.
In our small community, we don't have enough resources to maybe to not stipulate. Because our churches are fused for.
Yeah.
Yeah, community center, all sorts of things.
Yeah, so I would say as long as the main person that, or the main entity that is requesting it.
Right.
Yeah. And so that there is an allowance, but again, the purpose being that it's to promote a community service.
Right, intense community service.
Not to support religious organizations.
Not denominational, but it's.
There's a few others that were in the, the stuff that, one of them that I do like is that we're, they're not using the funds to build the reserves. That if there's an actual need, let's fund the need. But if they're consistently running with reserves, that to me is not a good use. Particularly when we're getting into operational.
Back to the treasurer thing though, they could have a significant period of the year, they need some reserves, so I don't know. I mean, what is.
But should they be making a profit off of those grants?
Well, let's see, the, the question really to my mind is what percent? Because everybody answered, you have to have reserves, that's all we're doing. So what percent is allowed, fifty, fifty percent of your budget or? I mean, if you go look at a lot of the LB50s in the paper, most districts are running somewhere around twenty-five percent of their budget is reserves. And that seems reasonable. So I just, I don't know.
But I just.
I don't really, I don't really care anyway.
I think there's a difference between them having reserves, which is fine, they should have, and then using the county grants to build.
Right, I understand. I don't miss someone, unless their reserves are low. Maybe a reserve of five percent because they just spent against the law the last ten years. You know what, build those back up a little bit is about for, from a treasurer's standpoint. It doesn't bother me so much because if something really bad happens and then all of a sudden it's not an urgency and they're not here. But, but I see your point. I don't, yeah, they shouldn't, they shouldn't have three years worth sitting in the bank just because they can save it up. And I know there is, my feeling is there's districts that do that, that they could.
That goes back to, that goes back to we need to teach them how to.
Right.
To manage their money, provide some support in order to avoid those issues. Well, and some of these things too may not be things that have to be specifically spelled out in here.
Maybe some dramatically, dramatically increase their reserves or something. I mean, dramatically, be doubled in one year or, yes, maybe use a adjective that's. Because like, you know, a little bit, I mean, maybe just don't spend all the grand while that increases the reserves.
Or, or making some of these reversible versus just, yeah, some.
I've been, I've been, I've been proponent of the reversible grants, the, the last, say, nine months. For some reason, that just really caught my fancy. And it's just, it seems a lot better than, you know, here's a hundred grand, oh wait, you didn't spend a lot or. Well, or even if their expenses ran over, the potential's there to maybe help with that. Then their reserves don't need to be as big because we are their reserve. So, or maybe that's the way to look at it.
Some other entities that were having issues where we're not, don't want to give them money upfront and want to help them solve the problems instead.
Well, they come in, they come in at budget time with this blue sky idea, oh, we're going to do blah, blah, blah. And they have no, that idea may be great, but we don't have any idea at the cost at the time. So reversible grant, that situation makes a lot more sense and just can't over, and there's no money. But like I said, it's caught my fancy, so.
Well, you just put it a way for us to manage.
It's a way for us to help, maybe help them, help them manage. And that also gets it out of the loan program, it gets us out of giving loans, which I'm not opinion of. I mean, it's necessary at times, but it's a difficulty management. We're not really, we're not a bank, that's what I keep saying, we're not a bank. We're not, and maybe Kelly disagrees, she's, we're not a bank.
So in terms of the reserves thing, maybe, maybe a piece of that is when we get into the point about how we're going to do a review process of these, if the intent is to have staff reviewing these before it comes up to us, then maybe that's just something the staff is kind of asking questions about and highlighting and kind of looking for trends about these folks' reserves over time. You know, like, do they have healthy reserves? If, if so, if they already have healthy reserves and they're asking for more and more money, then maybe there's, that's a red flag there, for instance, they don't know.
More of a guideline.
Right, we, we had one applicant last year that asked for about twenty grand and is sitting on over five million dollars in the bank. Those sorts of things, is that really what we should be, I mean, they can afford it on their own.
Yeah.
But the, the reporting on the back end of these grants feeds into this.
Right.
When they're, they're, we start having them turn back in, okay, this is what we did, this is how we spent the money, this is what we came up short or how much we had left over, then we can feed that into the next year cycle because we will come during the year.
So do we feel, have we captured kind of what we're.
The eligibility criteria is?
Yes, except what are we doing with the operational?
Right, so that's, that's our next slide, right?
Project plus.
Yeah.
Okay. So all, all diggered in, because this is a sticky wicket, I think, for all of us. I do not think that we can go and say to these entities, we are not providing operational support as of today, kind of thing. I don't, I don't think we can do that. However, I think I would like to, one, say that, in other words, I'm willing to operate, to provide operational funds, but in a grandfather clause kind of way. That if you have previously, previously received operational funds, we will consider those requests, but we're not going to be taking on new ones because I think we're just exasperated, we're having a problem. And then, but I would like to put some stipulations on the operations support in that I think that part of the stipulation is that, that what they submit back to us is a sustainability plan that is approved by the, by the next request time, in essence. So if, if they're applying this year, then my expectation is that before they apply next year, that there be a sustainability plan. And if there is not a sustainability plan, that they are not eligible the next year. And in essence, we are forcing them, even if they're, even if they're not totally able to follow it the first year, just having a plan in place to me is the first step to get, get them to think about how else is going to look for them long-term and to start getting creative, if necessary, about how they're going to sustain themselves. And so it doesn't even necessarily have to be a plan that cannot be tweaked over time, things like that. But I am, I would like to put that, that as an initial stipulation in place that, that will give them those first sort of twelve months to work through that and put something on paper. But if the next year, there isn't a sustainability plan connected with it, then, then they're on their receipt form.
No, I totally agree with that.
I have a question. These entities are, yeah, well, what if, let's say their grandfathered in, but they might be more ruined by asking in the past due to change in the organization, extended office hours, et cetera. Is that going to be considered? Or is the plot or is the amount that they've been getting in the past kind of going to be the top tier?
Probably not initially, although I will say that if you go ask for grants from, say, a poor family that are not operational, they want to make sure that you're not fully reliant on them.
Sounds like you'd be increasing your dependence, basically, if you're asking for more, so that's.
Exactly, so I think what we maybe would, one of the things I'd like to, for us to consider on the operational is putting a percentage that we're willing to cover of their operational. So, because if they are seventy, eighty, ninety percent relying on us, they are particularly vulnerable when those funds go away. And so I just.
They're vulnerable when they start stepping down, I think, because they just get a proportion of, of it.
Yeah. I mean, I know that.
Yeah, but I'm just, I'm just putting that out there, that you know, when the funds start stepping down, I mean, the amount they receive would get pulled back, or probably a similar percentage. I'm guessing ten years in the future, right? But, so yeah, I mean, ninety percent, yeah, a big hit.
Yeah. So I'm just, I mean, one of the, one of the ideas that I.
I don't think there's anything that's high. Let's start there.
No.
I, I.
And it also matters what, because fifty thousand dollars to one entity might be ten percent of their budget. Fifty thousand to another entity might be fifty percent of their budget. I mean, there's, it's not a one-on-one.
Yeah, I think there's a couple people, I would imagine, without them actually reviewing the budget, we're probably giving them at least a third of their budget.
Well, I mean, I'm just, for example, like the Gillum County Fire Services. We give sixty thousand dollars to cities, each give a little bit, both of the fireworks.
Forty grand tax, probably, so.
So I mean, we're a big chunk out there and I'm not sure what they would, how are they going to be able to.
So on, on that one, we actually have an IGA in place that stipulates those payments, which I think actually only stipulates fifty thousand. So we were just looking at it the other day.
Yeah, we said.
So, for, for some reason, we're paying a little bit more and the cities are paying a little bit less, it was in the agreement. But, yeah, there's, there's some of these things, you know, we're funding them because we made a free.
And are they going to be affected by these new stipulations?
Well, that's what I'm saying, like that one in particular, we have an agreement that says we're going to give them these fifty thousand dollars a year. We have to change that agreement if we, more than.
The agreement of the prior.
Well, they could be grandfathered in, I mean, that'd be your cap, it's your fifty grand. We're going to do a fifty grand, so that's your floor.
Well, what if at some point they decide, time may decide they need another employee or something? Are we going to be hamstrung that we can only give you? I don't know, I'm afraid, I'm nervous, I'm nervous about making it too.
Too restrictive.
Too restrictive.
And I get that, but here's the reality. Like if we encourage them to spend beyond what is sustainable for them by, by backfilling, there will come a time when we don't have the money to backfill them. And so if they're hiring people, the, the impact on them is going to be more because they're going to have to lay somebody off when the county funds aren't there anymore. So like, we've got to get the community out of the mindset that this is a never-ending string. Because even if something's a good idea, it doesn't mean it's going to be sustainable. And if we start propping things up that are not sustainable and set the expectation that we're always going to be providing those operating expenses so they don't need to change and be creative about how they're bringing funds in, we are setting them up to fail. We are.
We are.
There's no other way around it. The funds will go away and they will all come to us the same year. Funds will go away the same year. And they will all say to us, we don't have money to keep the doors open. So we have like this window now where we can get people moving towards sustainability. But if we don't, if, if we're not, I think. But if we don't, if, if we're not, I think...
There's, there's a lot of...
We're running a little bit...
And now, so hopefully, we can get them on the right course.
Yeah. I mean, I'm not saying let's be draconian and like pull back all this funding. I'm just saying, if, if they don't move towards sustainability, they're not gonna be here.
And this is something, I'm on the Coalition Coalition's board. And that's something we've worked towards there. Like, it's part of our Bible, is they have to, you know? Don't bring us the same project every year and expect us to pay for it, because we don't have to. It says it right in the Bible. It's not to say we haven't funded some things for a long period of time that we think are really great projects. It's just, it's not really the intent of the Coalition Coalition for us to be the sole source of funding for X, Y, Z program. So, I think that's sort of the, the point here. It's not, not that we want to get a quiet option, we don't like a program. It's just, you know, at some point, we're doing these projections. I mean, maybe some other huge, we don't know what's gonna happen ten years from now. Maybe we'll have some other huge funding shortage. But as of right now, as of the contracts we have in our hands, it's all gonna start tapering off. So...
And, and...
You gotta do the...
So, to Caitlin's question like that, it, the more that you rely on us, the more at risk you are long-term, is, I think, what the takeaway is. So, you just, it's not saying that we will deny that kind of necessarily a bump, I guess. But know that you are taking a, a risk to your organization because it's not gonna be sustainable for us long-term. So, I would expect, for instance, if you were coming to us and saying, "I need more time because I need to be going out recruiting larger members that are going to be paying more income and are making a sustainable longer term," then that, for instance, may be something that we could look at and say, "Well, actually, a little bit more expenditure upfront will make you sustainable long-term." If you're just saying, "You know what? We need an extra person answering the phones," and so, that, to me, is not going to be sustainable. And that also risks that you will have to lay somebody off if we can't fund. So, it's a hard conversation that is to have. This, this isn't easy. What are you thinking?
This is a hard conversation.
It's hard.
What we know is that I know.
There's a, yeah. Well, there's a reason previous courts haven't taken it up, because it's not easy to say that things have to change.
Well, not if you wanna be a good guy, but we're not necessarily here to be the good guy. Here to make sure that our town survives.
Right. Well, okay, we all be successful.
Yes, exactly.
One guy can all build, first, and then all builds, it's not necessarily...
Just a couple things for you to keep in mind. You know, one of the real challenges for our community has been historically, we've been losing population. So, we've been, we've been shrinking. And we've just turned a corner over the last eight or nine years. We're starting to grow our community again. And a lot of what the Corps has done has been pump-prime. For example, when I first got here, most of, a lot of the businesses were closed in the economy. And we worked really hard, worked with restaurants to get them open. The hotel was open, it was a beautiful hotel, but they couldn't keep clients because there were no restaurants to feed their, their constituents. And so, when we were able to prime the pump, help provide a grant funding, get these restaurants open, then both of the businesses worked really well together. The more that a hotel client would come in and they could eat, they'd enjoy the community, they were out more, and then that filled the hotel up, which in turn helped the restaurants out. So, that's just one example. But all, a lot of these different quality-of-life things that you fund, they're pump-priming. And so, we don't wanna lose and start restricting all these entities severely, and then, you know, we become an unattractive community. And occasionally, you're gonna have to help grant funds to a private entity to get them in here.
I'm saying we're not, though.
To attract them.
I don't think we are, kind of.
And if you don't, then it makes recruiting companies to come into the community difficult. And so, I, I would caution you, you know, and look at that.
I mean, I, I get that, Peter, but I also think there's some mentality that, that anytime anybody has a good project, they need to come to Gillum County to fund it. You know, I'm, it's one thing if somebody's coming, if, if the organizations that we identified are coming in and they're saying, "We've brought together a coalition, and we've got grant funding that's coming in, we've got..." But too many of these projects are being solely funded by Gillum County, and we have a lot of empty buildings that we've paid for. And I have concerns about that for long-term. That's not sustainable to me. And so, I mean, I think we're setting these guidelines because we don't want the parade of people coming in with the next great idea and us not being able to compare the apples to apples and make sure that we're being truly strategic about what's gonna move the...
And the key there is, you know, your, what your strategic objectives are. Where do you wanna head? How are you gonna take it? So, I'm not saying that every project that comes in is worth funding. That's clear about what I'm saying. I'm saying strategically, there's gonna be good investments that you can make to encourage private industry to move into the community. And you don't wanna completely shut the door on...
So, that goes back to, a business isn't sustainable if we don't have the population to... Because that's to be the customer. So, putting a business in where we don't have enough people to support it in the first place doesn't make any sense. We need to go back to that same problem, whereas we need to have housing for, someplace for the people to live so that we have people to support those businesses, and then those businesses will come, and they'll be profitable.
So, we're, we're dealing with a lot of chicken and egg, which comes first, you know? Housing's another project that we're, we're taking on. We need, we need more housing. And then, the more population we have, it makes the businesses more sustainable. But then, are people gonna move in if they don't have any services? And so, this is part of this chicken and egg that we're constantly scrapping with. So, I'm just...
I mean, I don't think, and one of our next sessions is gonna be on loans, but I, I don't think we should be in the business of handing out taxpayer dollar, taxpayer dollars to private businesses. I don't, how do you, how do you pick and choose which restaurant is more valuable? How do you pick and choose?
Well, it looks like the, like, we're current in favor, so I don't...
Yeah, I mean, I...
But we've got, we've got, we've already got, like, Peter's the porter. He's the port manager to the, or executive director, whatever title is currently. Port manager. But, you know, we have funding in them, so if he came out with a great project, there's no restriction there. He's one of the people on the list. He could get funding. So, we're not, I don't think we're hurting our economic development by saying, "Hey, this just isn't what the county specializes in." I mean, we need to, we need to realize our limitations, and that's something, you know, Kelly and I deal with every day, in our office at least. You know, we don't know everything there is to know about being tax collector, about being finance director, and being, I mean, we were ten-haps IT, right? We don't know everything there is to know about that. So, we have to have people, we even call and say, "Hey, look, you know, we're kinda ignorant on this. What do we do?" And so, that's, that's where I thought the porter would fit in, is, hey, look, we're ignorant on this. You know, what can we do? What could, you know, what could we do to make this? So, you know, send them to the porter, send them to the...
PC here.
Yeah, PC, DC or something like that. I don't, I don't understand why we even wanna be in that business. I don't wanna be in that business. It's, it's, it's beyond my, beyond my level of expertise, that's all, so...
So, back to operational, Peter. It seems like we had some, maybe consensus that we would make one of the stipulations for operational support be that there be a sustainability plan developed.
You can't pull rug out under this first year.
Exactly.
Give them a chance to...
Take that, I mean, the guy needs to, the guy needs to run the budget. It is, so it's more of a, a couple years of just, I think.
Yeah. And I think your idea of stipulation that next year, when you come back, you need to show us a plan that shows that you know what you're gonna do and how you're gonna get there. And it might take you three years, but we want you to see you drop your request for operational funds each year to show us that you, you know that you can, that you can... Well, just Caitlin, if I can.
Yeah.
Your hypothetical problem. If that's what that entity wants, then they need to provide the plan to make it happen for them. And if it, you know, if it takes three years to do that, but if there's a plan, then that's something that needs work.
Yeah, and I would say over time, then what we would be doing, then sort of the first year's sort of the requirement that the plan can place, right?
Right.
And so, then subsequent years, I think what I, what we would expect, or what I would expect, is that part of the staff's due diligence is digging into, are these guys actually more sustainable? Are they putting the plan in place? Are they showing progress toward, you know, and that? And that would be, I mean, the entities are determining what their sustainability plan looks like, but checking in with us, because again, I think the, if there's a plan in place, but there's still no progress, we need to be identifying why there's no progress, and if there's more support that needs to be made in terms of technical support.
Yes.
Getting them to a place where they're more sustainable. But that's part of the check-in process, is that, again, and just put on the record, like, the idea's not that we want to be cutting people off. The idea is that the funds have a sunset, and so, this isn't like, I just, for people watching at home, because I'm sure this will end up being one of a YouTube sensation for our sessions, is that that's not, I don't think any of our intent to cut people who rely on us long-term off. It's just a reality that...
We're not, we don't wanna set up anybody has to fail. We want those to succeed. We wanna do that, but we have to do it over time. But they can't succeed if they continue to ask for money that we don't have. Long-term, we don't have.
We won't be able to, by long-term. Okay. Do we, everybody feel okay? I promise you we'll get to this.
No, 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 I just...
Subsequent.
I, you know, I think it's worth a try. I think it's worth a try. There's certain entities that I'm, you know, I guess I'm concerned about if they are going to be able to do it, but, you know, I think we should try.
I'm gonna say, where's the last one? I feel the same way. Some of those, why, I don't know.
There's getting some that's in the...
I don't know.
Well, and doesn't that kind of depend on the services that they're providing?
It does, I think.
I mean, if, if it's an essential service to our county, then...
Yeah, one of my, one of the things I would...
If it's, you know, something else.
Right. Okay, good. Yeah, okay.
Oh, I'm not saying that, but fire the... Oh, good, yeah.
Right. What sounds great this time here? No, not really.
No, this is a house fire.
Yeah, it's house fire season, but, you know, and the whole country's on fire. And August didn't sound good either.
No. We have to consider essential services.
But I don't think it's unreasonable to ask people to start thinking about how they could be sustainable with us.
Absolutely.
And to try to move in that direction. I feel like that is a, that is a reasonable request for us to make.
And hopefully, their whole budget isn't.
Well, they know how to, hopefully, they understand how to run their business better than we do. I mean, part of the point.
And I would say that we are mandating how they need to get to sustainability so they can get creative within their own organization. It's just, I wanna see some progress toward that goal. Okay. Next one?
Real quick, while we're still kept on this project, first operational. When we get into the actual grant review process, what would you guys think about separating out the projects and the operationals so that they're done slightly different? Maybe there's a slight difference in the applications, just to, to help the review process that it can be tailored to, okay, this is for a project versus this is for your...
Well, because the operation, operational is going to require that sustainability, whereas the project is not. So, they are gonna be, they're different. They're gonna look different.
I think you...
Yeah, I think they're...
In the comparison...
Yeah, they can tell us what, how they feel each one fits together.
Yeah, I would, I, I think having to separate an operational versus a project would help us compare apples to apples. Is the next one on the, how often? Okay. I'll read it for everybody until Sandy gets it going. Uh, how often backcourt want to receive grant requests throughout the year? No, don't you do that. Never. I love, I love this thing, but never as an option.
I put that on there. You know, obviously tongue-in-cheek, but to make it a point that all this funding is how you should funding to do with as you see where fit to disperse or the purposes you see are appropriate and, and should be. So, that's, that's why it's there. A little bit tongue-in-cheek, just a little reminder.
That we don't have.
Okay.
I mean, I'd say traditionally, maybe I'm jumping in a little bit, but...
Go, go.
A lot of it, I'd say, is maybe the one-grant cycle helps with the budget, or number three, continuously open. I mean, I think maybe Commission Weather Office, definitely, but having heard people request maybe, you know, any time of the year. And I've been a part of the Coalition Coalition, again, we have two grant cycles a year of this spring and fall. And that works pretty good, because you get this time in the middle that, basically, I have grants to hear, you can do other business. And then, you know, I guess some projects do have a short lead time, so it gives them a chance to, I mean, you're never more than a couple months, basically, for a grant, some kind of grant cycle, so... But that's all I gotta say. I'm gonna quit now.
My thought is, can we for sure next a continuously open cycle? Do I have this piece for you? It's Andy.
You know what came in the email?
Yeah. Well...
It's in there.
But I don't have one, I lost it.
What's going on?
It's in there somewhere, but...
We did put our information in our slides.
This is a, this is a question somewhere. I just sort of split it out to stand on.
So...
Yeah, it's on page two of the OJ, the bottom.
One more page, one more page. I don't think I have it on mine.
So, the top's a eligibility criteria, then you get down to process?
Yes.
And at the very bottom.
Yes, well, it doesn't go quite as far as, you know, it talks about a few of it, I guess.
I, I've expanded for the...
Thank you. Because I was pretty sure I didn't have never on here.
No.
So, my thing, I would not, I don't wanna do an open cycle. I don't want this constantly coming through.
That's what we're trying to avoid here.
Well, makes, makes it difficult to budget.
Yeah. Yeah. I could see maybe doing two grant cycles. I don't know.
Is, how does that work for both of you?
Well, the first grant cycle would just be a conjunction of budget.
And then, you have to set aside X amount of dollars, or like a fall cycle.
I mean, so the way we, you know, the Coalition Coalition has beat it dead worse, but we get, say, six thousand dollars a year. We spend three on the spring, three on the fall. So, it, it makes that spring cycle difficult sometimes, because you'll have four thousand dollars of the grants coming in, and you only have three grand. So, generally, we just cut them all back by, you know, they get three quarters what they ask for, they'll get whatever takes advantage of the budget. Or sometimes, maybe one of them doesn't fit our criteria, and the prop solves itself. But it does make that, that first grant cycle a little more stressful. The second one's easy, because you just don't have the money. I mean, you don't have the money. It's, but you, you really do, you owe it to those people in the second half of the cycle to conserve funds, so at least they have something to apply for.
You know, if, if we did look at maybe having two grant cycles, could it kind of stay the same way now, whereas the majority of them would hit us on that in, during the budget time, and now, that second cycle would be for kind of these unknowns? Or are they gonna split, or are people gonna be like, "Oh, I'd rather it falls," or we wouldn't know?
So, what if, because so many of these are operational, and so I could totally see the taxing districts in particular, who are meaning to firm up their own budgets, this driving them crazy, having it split?
Yeah.
So, what if we looked at doing the operational, doing two grant cycles? The spring being for operational requests, to your point about splitting them out? And the fall being for project requests?
And then, a certain amount of money has been set aside, and that's all we've got.
And then a certain amount of money has been set aside and that's all we've got.
Right. The one thing I would maybe throw into that is maybe the spring would be operational and projects, and then the second one would be strictly projects. The spring, the spring is still in conjunction that way, it'll, if something good has come up.
Right.
Say it's hard at the back of the year.
Right.
Yeah. So we would do two grant cycles. The spring would be operational and project. The fall would be just the project. Because really, nobody should, if somebody's coming to us, we're operational funds, something anyway, or.
Well, they get another burner's statement, most of their budgets around the same cycle are fiscal year to.
Yeah.
They're beginning a fiscal year with a.
With a pretty significant deficit, they're asking for it in the fall. Yeah, so. And then, but I just want to make clear, commissioners, that what we are saying then is that when somebody comes up to us in public and says, I have this great idea, that we are in agreement, that our response to them is, hey, great, the grant cycle for the projects that we fund is in spring and fall, and that we're not allowing it. Because there's still going to be some other funds, right, that are tucked away, that are tucked into this rationary that we could spend, and so I'm just kind of hoping that we have an agreement that when we set these guidelines, we really mean that we're not taking project requests outside.
Yes.
Are you okay with that?
Um, well, I'm nervous about that, but I like that you're saying that there is, there is the possibility of some funding from some other sources that could be available. I just, you know, I just, I just, I like the idea of having it be very structured like this, but you know, I also know that in the past, things have come up and they've been things that were time-sensitive and so I'm just worried about that a little bit, but I'm willing to try this, yes.
And I would say if it's a project that's driven by us, we can spend money. I'm talking about.
No, I know, I'm talking about other.
You know, when other people are coming to us, that perhaps asking people to do a little bit of foresight and planning so that it doesn't become our emergency.
I do like that.
Is not unreasonable.
Yeah, no, I was taking, and that's the reason we're here today.
It's okay to say no, is what I'm saying. It's okay for us to say no sometimes.
Well, with a venture, we can't say no anyway.
Yeah.
I mean, if somebody comes to me and says, I have this great idea, it's like, no, that's great, we need to bring it to the board because I can take that decision.
I just. In terms of our efficiency.
If I can't, you know, I can't say yes or no.
Or maybe you're, I think it's a good idea because.
No, that's going to take a different.
But I think this will also help. I mean, I found, I found it interesting because I did have a discussion with the Sherman County folks about what kind of requests they come in, whether this how, you know, whether they got requests coming in on out, out times of the year, and they said no. And that's just because they set the expectation upfront that the answer was going to be no, if they didn't come in during the times they needed to come in. So that's part of us.
People started to expect this, I mean, like, also coalition with the ball, I started having people ask me, or, you know, they, they, the grants are the same month every year, we kick one in.
The chamber.
The chamber, as, as representative chambers.
Yes.
But, but yeah, I mean, it's just.
I mean, think of it like this, like, we wouldn't, like, the Ford Family Foundation, we're granting, in some cases, almost as much sometimes as they hand out. If you look at their process and how, how much control and accountability is in that compared to what we've requested or asked for previously, we are pretty freewheeling with the public dollars.
Yes.
And so I'd like us to be more in alignment. I mean, people who normally ask for grants regularly are used to having those restrictions in place and having to make plans around funding cycles and not just being able to ask us to cut them a check.
And have, and have those reporting on it on the backside.
Yes.
Okay, okay. Yeah, well, someone sent us a communication that said, this is the easiest grant of all the grants they do, and I, I don't want to be the easiest grant. Well, they got a red flag.
And I think the public, we have a responsibility to the public not to be the easiest grant.
Yep.
Not that we're not making good investments in good community organizations, but accountability needs to be part of the process, I think. Okay, what's next?
All right, so talked about the who, talked about the what, now the how. How are you going to make these decisions? Do you want these rankings? Do you want, does everybody get a little bit of money? Is it only the best projects? Is it going to be funding cap? We're spending this much money and that's it? All that sort of stuff.
I mean, it's a history thing. Um, we can just lock ourselves in a room and blow it up. But, yeah, I think that's about right, isn't it? Yeah, not about fighting so much, but.
Sometimes.
Sometimes, yeah.
That's good.
I'm not, I'm not saying that's the best way, it's just the way it's been done, so.
We're not all going to agree all the time.
No.
So I'm thinking, my sense is that when we're actually, of course, this being my first budget, that we're, when we're actually in the room, what I would like to see us doing is looking at the larger part of money, making sure that we're making the strategic sort of long-term investments, and by that I mean the trust funds that we want to shore up, the, if we do want to do a building fund or some kind of long-term sort of facilities, fund those kinds of things, and then what's left over that we designate is sort of, this is what we can spend. So I would envision that the budget's going to, committee's sort of going to come to a consensus on how much do we want to grant out this year? What do you think, Nick?
My feeling in the past, that isn't the way it's worked at all, basically. We look at the civic funds, let's say, we use as an example, and say, well, our goal is to save half of it, right? So the courts come up with some kind of fine sky number, it could be half, it could be, oh, we want to save 25%, whatever. So then they've just taken that, and that's given us the cap, and then within that cap, usually there's more, there's still more requests than there are within the cap, so you end up arguing about, these guys do really awesome projects, which is people on this, these guys, well, they always ask for way more than they need, we give them a little less or whatever, and that's where the, that's where the fighting, so I don't want to fight. The discussion ensues, right?
Why aren't we going to mediate that by having better structure to how the.
Well, hopefully, hopefully coming up with the, to me, like, coming up with the 50% or whatever would be less of a throw a dart at the wall, more of a targeted, this is really what we believe we need here, you know, some kind of factual basis instead of, I've got a feeling.
Yeah. In terms of how much we are pulling back.
Right, because there really isn't, I don't, I don't feel like, as somebody that's sat through the budget committee meetings, I don't feel like there was a real good justification for the 50% or less. You know, this just makes sense because then we can, it was kind of like kicking the can, basically, well, if we save half now, that means when they come to us in 10 years for our money, well, we still got the half we saved. Right, and that's kind of the logic, you know? It's okay with inflation, right, I mean, a half's really not worth half in 10 years, it's worth like two-thirds of that, so. You still run into the funding problem in the long run, but I think it was easier to sell half. I don't know, but it's coming up with some sort of logical basis, like, these are our other goals and they require this much funding, to meet these goals and then splits.
So then, would it be beneficial, do you think, for us as the court to, prior to the budget season, really think through what those, what those different funding pots are that we think need to be funded? So, for instance, if we want to shore up the homestead.
Homestead, very big town, so.
Or if we want to do, I don't know what else we would want to do, that we come into the budget cycle really knowing
I don't.
how much.
Yeah, because I think, because the budget committee ultimately looks, it's, you know, the budget committee's there to advise the court and approve it, but they aren't there to tell the court what to do. I mean, it's, it's still, at the end of the day, it's
Court's decision.
the court's decision, so within the parameters, approved by the budget committee, but, so the, the budget committee really, the day of, the day we worked on, we were working on the grants, they kind of looked at court like, well, is this something you think's, you know, they're looking, and they're not, the court's not making a decision that day, I don't want to get that impression, but the, the budget may still look to, because the court really doesn't want to deal with it.
Right. And, and that's, and that's correct. I mean, that's the way, I mean, when I've worked for other entities, it was, these types of decisions were really made by the budget committee. It was, and we do that a lot more than any of the other groups I've worked with. We, we came in with a budget that's pretty, pretty well set up and said, you know, are you okay with this? This just looked good. But, so going in there with an amount, saying, this is how much we're going to have available for this grant funding, and already decided how much we're going to set aside and what, what our priorities are as far as that, I think that sounds good, that sounds good to me.
So here's.
Well, if you just had criteria in the, in the budget committee, say, hey, you know, these grants all look, they look like they fit your criteria, I will go for that. I mean, that's okay. Takes them a little way off the court's shoulders, saying, oh, all these don't fit the criteria, these, you know, more eyes, maybe they see some reason that they do fit the criteria they could see. Because a lot of times you just get hung up on one criteria and they don't fit, and that's in there, but maybe they, you know, I don't know, it is, it's a fun, it's a fun process because of the discussion, everybody looks at things a little different, so. But that's frustrating too, because you don't understand why they don't see it your way.
So are we, is the consensus that these requests still go before the budget committee, these grants? Or that the budget committee is just setting the cap and that it's the court's final decision on granting?
Well, I've, I've been thinking about that for the last couple of years, because like I said, the experience that I had prior was that the governing body was the one that leads those types of decisions. And the budget committee kind of approved the budget, but then I started working with county and, and the county did it this way, and I was like, and, and the other two commissioners felt that that was the way they wanted to do it. So I, I can see it from both sides and I was going to just.
Part of that is a historical, historical thing too. The budget committee originally was excluded, and they wanted to be included, so the court had been available to let them be part of the process, and I think it's good, but at the same time, I'm not a court member, so I don't know. But, but that's really kind of, because I think a couple of years before I started this trajectory was when the budget committee really made, started being more of the the process, when everybody came in, talked about the program, got that, basically, because it all, pretty much all comes out of one line item in budget that the court administrative manages. But yeah, that line item, all the, all the budget committee really doing is they're just approving the total in line item and saying, well, somebody can discover this, somebody can discover that. But they can just prove an amount, I don't, I think it's good they want to be part of the process.
What do you think, Sherri? I mean, I'm sort of split. I think, um, I think on the one hand, having the budget committee introduce its community members to that process and provides just outside of the court perspective.
I think that's a more perspective, but.
And ultimately, I mean, if the court's unanimous, they can tie the budget committee up because there's only six members. So for some reason, for some, the court feels really, no, I'm serious, if the court feels really strongly about something for some reason, um, it's just a matter of swaying one budget committee member, and so it's not, I don't really feel like it's taking power away from the court or giving it to the budget committee, either one, because the court's going to have the budget committee, but.
Well, I think my answer, I don't know, is, um, leads into the more opinions, the better, the more eyes, the more.
Yeah.
Judge.
Sure.
Can I, can I offer up just a comment here?
Of course.
For the record, unless we are, and listening to that, but I really respect all of what you guys have put on the table, but there's a little reason for the budget committee to be statutorily required and to perform its role, and if I'm hearing the conversation correctly, there's an option here that you're looking at that more or less is using the budget committee as an advisory group. And I would caution you to be careful about that because a governing body's responsibility sitting as the budget committee is a lot deeper than just being an advisory board. That, that would be my thought. I don't know, but.
He always wakes my head up like this.
Maybe my friend Peter would have something to offer up on that, I don't know.
Well, I mean, I've got something to offer on that, I don't, so an example would be, um, budget committee members tend to call me home and and brag about things because evidently I'm in charge of the court.
Really?
So, so let's say something went through budget committee and the budget committee didn't buy it all. I mean, this is happening more than once. The budget committee's like, no, this is a turkey. Well, ultimately, the court later in the budget year could just go in and amend the budget and do it anyway. I mean, it's against the budget committee's recommendation, um, but that's ultimately, that's really, the court's still in charge of the budget, like or not. But yeah, that kind of upsets the budget committee members because they feel like, why would we even bother? Why would we even bother spending their time because they're just going to go do whatever they want anyway? And, um.
Well, and I, that has happened, that has happened, and I think, you know, ultimately, I think it is up to whatever board that is, that is, you are sitting on, that is the governing body, but I think what we need to just do is like, you know, there was a link in here that I had a lot, and I wrote a little link that said, but we would strongly go with the recommendation of the budget committee.
Right.
But I don't think that you want to say that you, you know, there was things in here that says that's the final decision and you can't make any changes, and I didn't quite agree with that, but I'm good with having the whole committee be in on, um, I, I just wanted to bring it up because I wanted to find out how you feel about, about how to handle that.
I mean, I think to Melissa's point, um, I mean, my, my sense, I don't know all the history of why, exactly why we've always had budget committees or what the impetus behind that is, but I can see a scenario where there needs to be more public input in how public funds are surveyed, and to me, because, I mean, special projects to me, it's, for the most part, is smaller chunk of money that we're giving out, and so maybe you can make arguments about how, whether the public should, how the public should be involved in making those decisions, but these are pretty, some of these are pretty big chunks of money. And so to me, that, I think it warrants having the budget committee going through that, making the process. The more minds, the better.
Okay, so my question could be, we could just talk about having a second cycle. Are we going to ask the budget committee to come in for that?
I don't, well, I wouldn't.
Oh, yeah, I don't think you have to, would they?
I don't think you have to.
Would it be a discussion during the, I mean, it'd have to be, it should be a discussion during budget, cycle, basically, with the budget committee that would set X amount aside for. And if they want to be included, I don't, I guess I don't have a problem with it, but the budget, you'd have to have in the budget period, you know, I mean, I don't know if they even can.
Yeah, I.
The budget's already set at that point. I think it would be more like special projects.
It would be just like the way we've been handling it in the past, is when they think, when things come up from time to time and all throughout the year, you know, we didn't bring in anybody else in court, I've just decided. But there, would be a reason why we couldn't ask if they wanted to be part of it. Well, except that I think you are going to get into some.
Yeah, I'd have to start with budget on that. I think we actually have to have a budget meeting. They can come sit in the peanut gallery.
Right.
But as far as actually meeting with governing body.
Could we look at doing, maybe part of our review process is having sort of the public input? Not call them the budget committee in a sense, I mean, they obviously have the budget committee process, but in terms of the fall stuff, could we look at
Yeah, you could have.
having some sort of way to have a group of public, and it may not even be the same members, it may not be the budget committee members, maybe a separate group that actually review those requests for the fall. I don't know, it's just something to maybe think about if, if we feel that having public input on those requests is important, um, instituting the process to allow for it. I think it does get a little bit dicey with with a committee that's, doesn't think it is a certain task because of all of the legal requirements to notice and things like that. I don't know.
I don't know, it might be solved if they deal with it for the larger counties, but kind of bigger than how they operate.
I think it would be hard to bring in a separate group of people because we're such a small, tiny community, everybody's got
Their figure.
a conflict with something.
Right.
That's almost my love to say.
So.
Well, yeah.
It'd be better to just get in the court and just do it, you know, the, the budget committee will have their input at budget time, and they will choose how much money will be available, and that can be their input, and then that fall cycle, just leave it up to the court.
Might be able to give them a, I mean, these grants are relatively consistent, so you might be able to give them a preview, say, here, here's what we think will be in the school in the fall, what you think of these, you know?
It also seems to me that I still would guess that we're gonna get the majority of them in the spring.
Yes.
And that there may not be much in the fall, you know? Might be one, might be none, I don't know.
Never know.
Might be four, might be five.
Who knows?
But I think the chance of value might be bigger though if it's not operating, now, maybe not. I don't know, it'll, it'll, I don't know.
It'll be interesting. We'll see how it goes.
I guess, I, we could, we could punt on this one a little bit and say, well, when it happens, um-
Kind of play right here. This will really be the first time we can see this.
Right. And then if, you know, the Budget Committee wanted to, I mean, I guess the discussion needed half of them during the budget cycle, is this something you even be interested in being involved in? Then maybe say, hey, you know, it's a small amount of money, we're not, we're not concerned. You guys did a great job with it.
I'd love it if they saw that.
Yeah.
So I, I think we've, how will the final funding decisions be made? I mean, legally they need to be made by us, I think, uh, the full court, but it'll go through the regular budget process, so. Does that make sense? Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay, so, do we want to fund the best requests or try to get someone, everyone something?
I've been, I've got a huge list of them this one. I like the ranking, but at the same time, it would make the process curd and gron, you know?
I don't think so.
You don't think so?
I think ranking-
Well, it's, yeah.
I think it simplifies it.
Maybe it simplifies it, but I think, I think there's a lot of argument in the ranking thing is my issue.
So, well, because that's right, again, that gets to what we're gonna talk about next, which is the merit criteria, how do you decide which are the best, most deserving projects?
Yeah.
Um, but if, you know, if you don't say, you know, we've got 20 projects and this one is absolutely the best project it needs to be, or, or program that-
I'm just saying, back to Kenny's idea, and this one, they don't even need our money, they're just asking. Two places I've worked with had the silos. And I hate silos. The silos, they took the funding, they split it up into five different amounts and they had these criteria and these are, you know, quality of life, these whatever. And all we did was argue about, will they fit in this one, will they fit in that one? They fit in, so as I said, I kind of liked the, I liked the give and take of it because it was a good thought experiment, but at the end of the day, what ended up happening a lot of times was like, well, they almost fit in this silo, let's just take them where they're supposed to get something. So it didn't really, I don't know if it accomplished anything.
Right.
But the other, the other way, I mean, the, the peanut butter method, to just say, well, you guys asked for 120% of what we have, so everybody gets 20% less. Um, that might bankrupt some of them, I mean, honestly.
Yeah, and, and that's been done, especially in social projects in the past.
Right.
Well, we don't quite have enough for everybody's request, so let's just cut everybody back 2% so that everybody gets something.
Yeah.
Which, which is a way of doing it.
Yeah. I mean, merit base-
It's not very strategic, though, is it?
Yeah, I think merit base has more potential for strategic, and it has more potential for people not gaining the system, because if, if you think everybody's getting cut back 2%, well, you just asked for 20% more and you're still 10% ahead. Um, and you see people do, they'll ask for way excessive what they really need just because, well, they're not gonna give you all they asked for anyway, so might as well ask for, everybody's got their own theory, right, of how to apply for grants.
So for me, I think I'd like to, and this might, we might be able to do this more. Hey, sorry. Go ahead.
I think that, that I like the rank from system, but I would add to that, that whoever puts in for a grant has to have a big business plan. I agree with the way the business plan has been in the business time or two. And I think that's extremely important, and I think it should be short term and a long term. That way you're gonna find out if you got sustainability in the program. And I think that they should have to address what that value is to the community, and the community's, well, the county actually, but, uh, you know, if the project is going to bring tourism or new housing or whatever it is, that should be spelled out. So when it comes to you, you know that they've done their homework and then pass on some of the grants that have been made and just came in and they said, we need 25,000, you gave us 10,000 last year, this year we're gonna expand a little bit so we need more money, and they said, okay. And then it falls back that, that it never gets accomplished, and you can't come back and say, well, you didn't do what you said you would, because you never did what you ever could have done in the first place. So, anyway, that's what I think.
Thank you. That's why we're here.
And the other, I mean, something else to Julius' point would be, um, reading the grants, you can put some, you need to specifically say what it's for. Because if you don't specifically say what it's for, they can just depend on tickets to the Blazers and we can't-
Well, it's a special project, Grant, so the special project needs to be-
Yeah, I was thinking more of the, the-
Title and a process, exactly what it is.
Sure, but just-
You know, what is our short term and long term plan and what assets, assets are visited down there?
Well, that would be good, I, I like that idea a lot because I don't, I struggle with, I mean, I don't know as much about everything as I think I do. And I don't know what, maybe they know benefits that I have even no clue about, and so it would be really helpful to me at least to figure, oh, they think it's gonna do this and I think it's gonna do this addition. So it might actually make a better argument for their project. Nothing else, I'm not guessing as much.
Oh, definitely. We have to have as much information as we can possibly have in order to rank it in the first place.
Yeah.
Because Joe Schmo asked for-
So yeah, some sort of county benefit, uh, component to the application, I think, would be, in my mind, I believe.
That's a really good, good suggestion.
So are, does it, Melissa, do you have any thoughts on best requests versus trade it, everyone something? I know you struggle with this.
I know.
Um, I'm not, you know, I don't, I don't think we have to give everyone something. Why, you know, come in. Just because they ask us, we, right, that their project falls-
And the other thing too is that-
Julius' point?
Good ideas, just because something's a good idea doesn't also always mean that it's the best investment for the county.
Exactly.
So it's really looking at which of these applications before us are the best investments, the most strategic investments for the county that we have in front of us.
So that's richer.
Yeah. So I would say best, best requests, and yes, that they should be ranked, because I don't know how you would determine best request if you're not coming with some kind of a scoring system.
So then what about, we've kind of talked around this a little bit earlier, but the funding cap? Because it, there's no point to rank one through 20 if we put so much money that, that we're always gonna pay all 20.
I mean, in terms of the cap, I think we need to, are we talking about funding caps for individual, like how much we're willing to give out per project? Or are we talking the overall, the overall?
I would say we need to have a discussion on both. Is, is there a maximum amount per request that you guys want to set? And then also, um, and a lot of this has to do with what we talked about earlier about deciding how much we want to put into some of those endowments, et cetera. Um, but setting a, this is how much money is available this year to give out in grants. Do you want to say we are going to set a cap of $500,000 per request or something like that?
I mean, I would, I would like some flexibility on the projects in particular, but one of the things that we haven't discussed, but I want to bring up again, um, is, or that I mentioned, I guess, but we didn't really get into, is on the projects, I don't want it to be fully county funded. I would like it to leverage, I am, I would rather see us prioritize projects, even if it's a higher amount that we are personally are spending, but that are bringing in more. So if there's a, if there's a million dollar project and they want a million of our dollars to make it happen versus it's a $10 million project and they want a million dollars of our, I would rather spend the one that's gonna leverage 9 million for us than the one that we're fully funding, if that makes sense.
It, it, it does, but that creates the potential, so if you, in the budget process, say, okay, you've got 1.5 million that we're gonna give out, and you get a million dollar request, then you've got a lot of people that there's not money left over for. And so that there's, there's a balance there that, that needs to be discussed.
But I'm saying, what I would, I'm saying one of the guidelines, I think, in terms of funding caps that's tied to it is the expectation that we are only paying a percentage of those, of those project costs.
Don't come and ask us for-
For a hundred percent of it. So if, for instance, I mean, we might need to look at like what some of the other large grantors kind of set as their internal guidelines might be helpful for us to take a look at. So like, I know when the childcare was building, um, they're building in the, in Conde and Ford family was one of their big things, and they were very clear that they, they needed to see not just, um, they needed to know not only that they were not the sole or primary funder, but also that those other commitments were in place before the money was released. So they, you know, so that we don't have people coming to us saying, oh yeah, we'll find the funds elsewhere, and then coming back to us the next year and saying, oh, actually none of those other grants turned throughout, and so could you give us a little bit more because now we don't have enough for the, you know? So I think we can learn a lot from how some of the large grantors handle those kinds of things. And I would like to see us, in terms of caps, looking at what some of the other large grantors for these kinds of projects, what kind of caps they've put in place versus how much they actually give out. For instance, I'd be interested to see like how much Ford loans out and what their actual caps are. Because they've been doing this pretty well, and it might just help us get a sense of what we should. I don't know. Those are my thoughts, but-
Will they know what they're gonna-
You guys, yes.
Well, I mean, some of these entities, that's all they can, we do so many different things, this is a small portion of what we do. So, you know, look at an entity that that's what they do, that'd be helpful.
All right, so this example I put up is basically the OWEB example, which is where watershed enhancement board, which is pretty much all they do is grant out money for projects. Um, there, there's all kinds of different examples. And the way they do it is they have a certain amount of money available total for the year, and they rank everybody one through, whatever, and then they pay, the number one person is paid, and the number two person is paid, and it's on down the line, so they run out of money, and then it's just done. And if you-
The other one, so it's part of the university system, that's the way they work. They funded the project, number one project that's funding for them, so.
Okay.
What, um, I guess one other question that nobody's said anything about, but I just wondered, who's, who's gonna rank them? I mean, what's that process look like? I mean, do I get to sit in my office and remember, Charlie, no, I don't wanna do that. But see my point, like-
Well, I think that-
I mean, OWEB's probably has some process too, right? They have a border, a border-
So-
There's criteria for that.
Right, so, you know, we'll get into the merit criteria coming up next, but basically, like what OWEB does, they have a, um, staff person who goes out and puts together a, a grant review team. They bring, you know, for them, it's all national resources, so they bring in experts from Department of Forestry, whatever, and they bring it together, and they go through and that review team ranks them. And then they submit those rankings to the OWEB board for consideration. Now, the OWEB board has full power to change the rankings if they see something. But, but it starts at that over level where everything is processed, you have people that really take the time to go through them, get through them, the committee that, that works it all out and, you know?
Yeah, we had a lot of grants that probably went through.
You know, and we're looking at, you know, 20, is this ranking?
I mean, I see it as, I would like a staff review, I think, first.
So when you say staff, what do you, we need to decide that.
But, but I, I would say, um, I mean, so here's, here's kind of an idea that I would throw out there. I think it might be beneficial to have sort of a one stop shop for all of these different granting, loans, special projects. Right now, they're housed in different areas in the courthouse, um, and so I would like to see those consolidated. And my preference in terms of the touch point for the public would actually be the treasurer's office. And part of that, part of my reasoning behind that is because, because Nathan doesn't vote on the budget in essence. And so it creates some separation politically so that people aren't coming in and lobbying, say Sandy for, here's why my project is this much better, and, oh, I happen to supervise Sandy and make the final, this, you know, like, there's some separation there because if it, if it goes through Nathan and maybe it's Kelly's the actual point person that's sort of getting out applications and letting people know and, and has sort of the first initial cut on eligibility, for instance, um-
Well, we give applications here, everything.
Yeah, but I mean, in terms of the-
They should give applications here.
In terms of the applications coming back, I mean, and, and the, oh, this isn't, this isn't a complete one, or this didn't come in on time. I mean, I don't know how you guys feel about that, but, um-
I mean, in our special world, I am the budget officer too, so I don't think it's super out of line. It just happened to be that when I started this treasurer, that the court administrator has done that, so, you know, we always do things the way we did before, um-
And it's nothing, I mean, you can just-
But they were comfortable with that, the court was comfortable with that, and the Budget Committee didn't complain, so, you know, at the end of the day, it's, you know, it's a little weird being the treasurer and the budget officer, because budget officer, I, I try to be quiet during meetings, but treasurer is pretty hard sometimes. So I have to change seats and try, but I, I think that makes sense. I mean, before, I don't know how much of a role the court administrator had. I know they, they sent out the applications and received them back.
Last year, last year, it was a much bigger role, and I, for one, appreciated the staff reports and that of the work that you did, you know, putting that information together for us.
Very helpful. So we may even need to look at sort of a partnership between the county administrator and, I'm just thinking, there's a, there's a political side to this, right? And that we, the three of us get requests when we're out and about, there's a lot more , I think, pressure because we are the ultimate decision maker on it, that it seems like having sort of a neutral place for those applications to come in and for the first cuts, like just the check on whether this is even an eligible-
The current standard.
Structure.
Yeah.
Needs to be more of a, less disconnected from, from us a little bit more. And I worry that if we house it in our, if we house it within our thing and somebody doesn't like that Sandy, for instance, decided this wasn't eligible, I will get a law.
I, I think, I mean, you can't be one person. I think there needs to be a team, maybe that's me, Nathan, and somebody else. I think that's the, the way to do it, so that you're getting not one person to-
Yeah, maybe first, if they totally didn't fill this out, I'd either call them and have them fix it, or they said they don't want to, and I put it in the key for later clock.
So in terms of like what you've laid out with, uh, eligibility and then merit, kind of what I was thinking is if there's, if there's a one stop shop where people come in, get their applications or have questions about, do I submit this or that? To me, I think, I think that that should probably be housed in the treasurer's office. And that that initial, this application is a complete kind of stuff, those can get sort of needed out. But then I think the next, and the merit ranking, I think deserves a team then at that point.
I think it's gonna be board or something, it could be the lady, but it just-
Then you get into that conflict issue though, there's just, just not- There's just not a big population to...
Well, we always have conflict. I mean, other than Kelly and I, I think everybody here is related, but, you know, half a town, but I see my point, right? I guess Peter and Julius, but yeah, I mean, it's, it's...
But if you keep it with staff, at least there's some accountability and stuff.
Yeah. It could be, it, you know? Not like official.
No, like official, yeah, like officials, staff, just something...
But what's the, but is that not just a suggestion?
I was just saying, it's a recommendation.
It's the court, it's the staff recommendation.
It's creating...
Saying, ah, I write this...
Yeah, it just creates more...
Yeah. It's a staff recommendation, and I would anticipate we would ask the staff to write out why they're ranked in the way that they're ranked. So this is ranked priority one because this, this, and this, we rank this one higher, so that there's some justification that we see. It's like the first word, basically.
Yeah, because I placed the slam number two over number three.
Exactly. To bring in our courage.
But that's a process.
One of the thinking is that it's kind of a two-step process. There's the initial interface with the public as they're coming in and questions.
We interface with the priorities, so I don't know that it'd be a good word.
So one thing, I don't want anybody to underestimate the workload that's going to come with making this a more formalized process from putting applications out, receiving them, storing them, getting them reviewed, and doing the contracting, and then on the backend, doing the reporting. That is a massive workload.
And the timeline is...
Relatively short.
Yeah.
Six weeks.
No.
Yeah.
However...
April, it's April 1st.
April 1st. Not all of those...
April 1st, it's...
Not all of those steps. It's not until April 10th.
No, that's your second one.
Right.
Was it April 3rd?
Maybe it's the 3rd.
I would say...
If the rest runs on Wednesday.
Not all of those steps have to be done if the budget is done.
Yes.
Sure.
This could be, this could be a dream for next year, something set, but, or maybe just a direction to, I think, for the fall, but I think we'd get more, I don't know, I think the rankings, me still have some hung on the ranking thing, I think that's going to take more time. Maybe not, maybe I'm too indecisive.
I think that if our application process will be...
Yeah. And I'd ask you about a question.
How, how well you lay out the criteria, you know, what's worth, how many points that I do score this stuff, and it could be...
Yeah, there's a string of questions about flagpoles.
Because if our, if our application processes, what we want it to be, then they're going to rank themselves by how they answered the question, and how much information they gave us, and that's what I think.
And it might take a few weeks of application over time to get it...
Yes.
All the information aligned.
Sure will.
Definitely.
The thing is, we don't have to have it perfect, this most thing, I mean, but I do think we need to start, some of those requirements on having sustainability plans in place, those things, I think we need to leave with some of those things now.
Definitely.
And then see what works, and we'll adjust as we kind of progress.
It's a plan progress.
So, but yes, duly noted on staffing.
Yeah, that's a lot of...
Okay.
So, just so I make sure I'm clear, where did, where did we end on like ranking and that sort of stuff?
Yes, to best for me, yes, almost okay.
Okay. And then worry about the funding cap when we get into actual budget stuff.
Yeah. Because I think we need to make some decisions on what some of the other priorities are that we need to set aside funds for, and that will, that will kind of indicate how much we feel we can have left over.
Because at this point, they'd say, oh, what was left over? Fifty percent, well, whatever the...
Whatever the...
Or whatever percent.
How the actual merit criteria is.
All right, there's a need to create.
Do you have some quick examples there? I mean, it could be almost anything, I don't know about percentages or shores, or...
Well, I think...
A buck to a hundred, or how you guys want to do any of that kind of stuff.
One thing we need to add to this too is the budget. Do you know budget? Do you know, you know, this is how much money we need, but this and this is how it's going to be spent? It's budget. Budget is there.
It's a bit of a hidden miss. There's a slight budget to pass, but it's something hidden miss whether they did or not. Some of the bigger entities I know that did, and asked for one. I had asked for one.
So I think that it'll be a necessity as part of the application now, that you will submit a budget where you will not be eligible.
Or make us.
Right. And then, you know, I sort of envisioned actually creating a budget form that would be part of the application.
That would be good, then they would all be saying...
Look at everybody's different...
Right. Yeah, it's a survey, so you can't just send us 20 pages of numbers and expect to hide what your true levels are.
Yes.
That's been done, some folks.
So we talked earlier about one of our criterias that have benefited the county, so obviously it makes sense that it would be part of merit. So are we thinking that that, I mean, that really is sort of a narrative written justification that this is, this is what the public receives from this investment?
And that they're going to provide on the application.
Yeah. Yeah. I like the idea of prioritizing projects that are leveraging outside investment. So particularly, I mean, obviously that's a little on the operational side, it's not as, to me, it's relevant, but not as relevant in any way.
Is that true?
No, for the operational, for operational side. Because some of these guys, as we've discussed, are relying on us maybe more heavily. So, and there's a reason they're relying on us more heavily, is they may not have outside funds to leverage.
Sure.
So I want to be kind of careful about that in the operational, but on the project side, I feel like I want to prioritize, if our money can be used to leverage larger sums of money, I think that's a good way to use our money on projects, so. What else do you guys think? May I put in?
Those are good, and especially I think the budget. That was definitely.
I do think part of the merit is this whole thing that Julius was raising on business plans, which gets to sustainability.
Right.
So I think that needs to be part of that, because, I mean, even on pro, even on projects, the question is just sustainability comes up when you're talking about buildings that you're building, or, you know, there's always a question of like, how are you going to maintain this after our funding goes away? And so I think that's a piece of that, because the large vendors in particular are very interested in seeing that you're not going to have an empty building later, that you know that you're, you're prepared to run this after we build this thing over. So I think that piece is important.
Yes.
It doesn't do us any good to build something that then becomes empty, so...
So a business plan, short and long.
Yeah.
So your timing is, bullet point also addresses your increasing reserves thing. And most, a lot of the grants, I think, part of it, you had to spend at the end of the year or return them, or there was... Our university, we absolutely had to spend all of it or give it back in a lot of the cases, so...
In most grants, yeah, you have to do that or they're reversible.
Yeah.
You know, just get the block of money.
Yeah.
If you spend this much this month, you're in girth for it.
Yeah.
Too much.
And since we've got a yearly grant cycle, I mean, it doesn't seem prudent and reasonable, or twice a year, I heard, maybe.
Is that, making them all reversible, is that more work for you then?
Yeah.
Yeah, but I don't...
But is it worth the work?
Yeah.
I think for me, from an accounting, accountability standpoint, it's worth every minute, but it is more work.
I think so too.
Because, I mean, people do ask, but, I mean, you want experiences two years at heart around Saturday, if I had four twenty gold, they'd say, oh, what about blah, blah, blah? And I'm like, totally not thinking about that. Turn the site between St. and stainless, and... So, but you come to the realization, you know, people really do, they are curious about what happened, and occasionally, you know, we get calls, or, a lot of our, our thing is, is, you know, we do everything right, and you won't even know we did our job, all right? But when things go wrong, you're going to know whether we did it right or not, because they're going to come looking at our records, so...
Yeah.
But the more complete they are, it's just good.
I think that draws them back then, to make sure they...
It might take so much, it could potentially take some of the accounting burden off of them, depending on how that's structured. I mean, if it was, you just submit the bills to us and pay them, that actually gets it outside of their budget, and, but that might create another issue, I don't know.
Well, you know, it doesn't have to be everyone.
No. I mean, so much...
There's one for operational, if that's really been practiced.
Maybe it's just a goal that's spent a year, or, because you want, you want the projects to move forward too. You don't want to say, oh, we want to, you know, we want to build a lot of this up here on the point of the airport, but it's going to take 20 years' funding, so they just come in every year, you know, I don't...
Yeah, I mean, that might work better for projects than for the operational funding.
Yeah. I'm not sure that it would be practical for the operational.
Well, yeah, and then also to go payroll, or to a payroll decision, that's not something the treasurer has to mention at all.
No.
So...
But for, for projects side, I could see that.
Well, and not every single time they need money, but this is...
Quarterly, you can draw basically.
Exactly. Maybe once they draw or something like that, so that they're not coming every time they need to pay a bill.
Yeah. Yeah, it's just a matter of the treasurer's office, you know, prove this amount, you're still within them.
Right.
I'm just trying to figure out a way to kind of stop some of these, we ask for $150,000 and really only, only get seven.
Right. Yeah. Or you're about there, that, you know, money for the room was used on...
Yes, of course.
Right.
Yeah.
Something like that.
Yeah.
Because it didn't quite cost as much as, you know... So we just could have money somewhere else, it doesn't ask for...
And projects to...
Well, that goes back to there wasn't any, you know, when the money was granted, it wasn't specific, it wasn't specific to your mark.
Here's some money, do whatever you want with it.
Right.
Well, except for when they come in and they say this is what...
They made a specific request, said we need this much money to do this project, and then they spend it otherwise. And that, whether we have any agreement, because we're going to have agreements...
Yeah, if there's actually, see, that's the other thing, is I don't know if they're actually...
Then that agreement can have a clawback clause of, if you don't spend this on the project you told us you were going to spend, you're either going to come back to us and say, I have this amount of money left over, and I'd like to use it for this purpose, get that okay? Or it comes back to account.
I think you just can back the county, and then if they want to come back with another special project, then you come back and ask them. And that's totally separate.
It's a new project.
And it's a whole new project, and it should be followed to the merit system like everything else? Not, we have this much money left over, and we'd like to spend it here.
Right. Because we never, I mean, Askers, never been anybody that's ever came back.
No. Well, that's not true.
Askers?
We got money back from Condon Radio Club, or it was Western Events. They disbanded and gave the grant back, their special projects, so I had to reiterate that.
The, when the fire hall was built in Condon, they had left over money they tried to get back, or told them to keep it.
Yeah. So it has happened, but very, because I can't imagine all these other projects for Zach, that the pen they probably gave them, they're using some time. But we don't have any way to prove that or not prove that, because they never asked for it.
Right. Because they're almost gone then.
Right. The contracting and the reporting will solve a lot of those issues. You just need to make sure it's worth it, the way you guys walked and worded in those processes.
So the idea then would be that we would not be paying, doing a reversible thing? That we would just stipulate in the contract that...
I, I think you would have a choice in the contract. When you're doing the grant agreement, if you had a certain project that you wanted to do as reversible, you just do that one as reversible. If you have one that you don't, then you say, okay, this one's lump sum, but at the end of the project, when you do your reporting, you're going to give us a, an actual budget of, you know, actual expenses, and if it's underneath the amount we gave you, then that money needs to come back. Is that what you guys were thinking, or...
I think, you know, projects, if each project's going to be different, and some will make more sense to be reversible, and others may make sense to be lump sum up front. That's just my first thought. You know, I'm trying to evaluate projects like the...
They're almost like...
Yeah. Saddle club when they...
Well, because...
Restructured their bleachers, that was something to me that would be reversible because it's...
You can tie, you can tie direct expense to it, or labor, or operations, or some partners, you go, oh, I need to expense, it's not just one big deal.
Operations, I don't think we can do on our own basis. I think that's got to be a lump sum, but even in, within projects, I mean, you see this happen with like building, buildings in particular, because a lot of times the plans are being drawn, sometimes years before, you know, the process...
They're all, they're all for your project.
Yeah, so you may see where somebody, we rarely come in under budget, but mostly going the other way. But I'm just thinking that, like, a reversible might not. So giving them the money and having them give us back what's, what basically is under, what was, what they came in under budget makes more sense sometimes than if, say, the school has a solid bid today for, here's what the bleachers cost.
Right.
And that's more, to me, a reversible, something like a large project that, that the cost...
Well, hopefully this large project, if you're an entity that can actually manage the funds, I mean, they've got other accounting basically in place, so I think that would be, that probably want to take care of itself to some extent.
I would just, I think if we just give ourselves the flexibility to choose how we would like to, but leave ourselves the option of asking for it to be, or hiding it be a reversible arrangement.
Definitely. Because like you said, every project's going to be totally, you know, the group is different, project different, structure is different.
All right. What's next, Sandy?
So are there anything else in here that you guys, merit, such as on that list? And do you have any, I don't know, necessarily need to put like percentages on and out, but are there some that you think are more important than others that, you know, we do, if the ranking process, you had, they should be...
Other way.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think they should be listed here in, in our order of what ways we want to bomb down the line, so that we are reviewing, and you can say, okay, this is our most important.
Right.
The first one is the most important.
Yeah, to me, I mean, obviously, for me, benefits accounting is number one.
Is number one. And then to me, I'm not sure, matching funds, I think, is two. And then I would say budget is three. I want to see your budget. I want to know how you're going to spend your budget.
Oh, yeah, the business plan to the list too?
Yes, and four will be business plan, short term, long term. Yes, and four would be business plan, short term, long term.
And I would just, I would put slash sustainability.
That's really debatable, I think.
Slash sustainability would be the business...
Yeah. Because that's really what we're asking for is to make sure those plans are actually realistic and sustainable.
Necessity, kindness.
So instead of necessity, could we rephrase that and look more at, are we the funder of last resort? So what I mean by that is, is somebody coming to us because there really is not any place else that they can find funds? Because to me, if, if they're coming to us because this, and we've identified that this is a benefit to the community, it needs to happen, but that there isn't any other funder out there, that to me gets more weak to somebody that's coming in and saying, yeah, it's a huge benefit, like, if I had two projects and they were both, or two organizations, say, because this is probably gonna be more likely, or we have two organizations that are coming to us, and I think they're both equally of benefit to the community, but one has some potential funding sources out there, they're just not tapping them, and the other one really doesn't, I mean...
Doesn't that, does that come in in matching funds leverage?
I mean, does that meet that?
No.
Not really.
It's a little different.
Kind of reversed.
Are, are we the first people you can match for money or if you try and find other...
This has been some of the business loan programs that we've kind of pushed towards. We're really a debt financing, we're, we're the funder of last resort. You need to go talk to banks first, you need to go try to find some grants. And if all that doesn't happen, you know, you're welcome. But we, you know, we're not competing with private businesses, isn't that it? That's not our goal.
Right. Because to me, you know, I mean, there's, the child cares, for instance. If you have a Head Start program, there's pools of money out there that an entity may make a strategic decision that we don't want to go after those funds for this and that, but it's helpful to know for me if, are you coming to us because we're the easiest source of money for you to get? Are you coming to us because there really is not another source of money for you to fund this?
So would that be like other sources of...
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't really know how to capture it, but I'm just thinking that, it's sort of the, it's kind of the reverse of the matching funds, because we want to, obviously, I think we want our priorities matching funds that are coming in, but we may have some entities that come in that they just really are coming to us because there's no other place for them to get money.
And I think that can be nestled under that necessity headline.
Okay. I guess I'm just sort of clarifying in the necessity, what exactly, how we're defining what's necessary. Because I guess the, the point is, is it necessary that it be county funds? Is that the only source that's, that's...
That's the question of the project happening, is that what the county's for? And why, explain.
And we can, before the next work session, give some better definitions of those things that lay out, you know, a little bit more clarity of the stuff that's been discussed today. Alright, so this is kind of the last slide I've had, which is some additional little questions, kind of going back to that first thing we talked about, but if you have, you know, more than just the SIP finite, we talked about, there's, you know, a, a list of different sources that these funds come from every year, and are they all appropriate, being, being used or changes? Is there something that you think is, you know, in the past, of course, didn't want things to be restrictive? So is there a certain one of these that you guys would like to keep less restrictive? Is there something that you think is redundant?
I mean, I guess I feel like I don't feel qualified enough to make that call at this point. And I would mostly just be looking related to the two of you to see, you know...
They just lie on us, but...
Yeah, and I always argue for making the budget more, you know, fewer lying items.
Yes, I was gonna say, I don't want to ever...
And maybe Leslie, Leslie worked on the economic enhancement ordinance last time episode. I didn't, wasn't, didn't really have any input on it, I mean, I read it and made the same hard noises, but I don't understand there was some economic enhancement, economic development. They're just kind of like the sand in this county, because it goes back, we're, we're too small for our eyes, a big pond. So I don't understand why some of these wouldn't be consolidated, but ultimately, I just managed the budget. The court decided that they didn't want to consolidate them, and that's fine, they didn't. And so maybe going into the future, it would, if you consolidated some of those a little bit, economic enhancement slash economic development, all into one fund, it would eliminate a couple of line items, but it would add to the, you know, I don't know.
Well, I think it would consider about track, how ease of tracking.
Right.
You know, but there's other ways to do that.
There's other ways to do that. I mean, a good example is the big, the big SIP fund, the two thirty five, one hundred, five fifty, fifty, one twenty. That's your big nugget, that's biggest line item in the budget, and that's been tracked internally. I mean, courts agreed to it, and it's always been tracked internally. It's all in the county system, it's not a secret. But as far as, you know, if you want to find out what's been, stick that line item, you have to go talk to the treasurer's office or clerk and get it out of the county system, because it's not, I can't just lift the budget and say it. But at the same time, that creates some, some liberty, because if somebody comes in with a gold star project, you could do something big without a lot of moving money around in the budget. I mean, just because it's a line item, you can move that money all over a lot of times. It's about being creative, which is a brilliant in my wheelhouse. I had a business one time called Creative Accounting, my wife told me it's horrible, so I had to burn all my business cards. But point being, I mean, it really, it, it isn't, it isn't really what we're supposed to do, it's not the intent of the budget. But at the same time, people do come in sometimes with, with pretty substantial needs, and you do need a little bit of flexibility, unless you want to go through and add a bunch of line items for contingencies, which there aren't very many contingencies in our budget. We could do that, but instead of doing that, we've chosen in the past just to have a few line items that were, you know, a little overfunded, and we use those as contingencies, it's just our operations. So, you know, that's my speech. I mean, the economic enhancement ordinance does put some, some garg rels on the side, so some of the spending can butt in.
Well, I, I mean, I won't completely believe it the way this set up now too, until we get a little bit more into it.
I think, I, I mean, my, my take on, so, my take on from a management standpoint is I like to leave everything alone so I figure out why it works the way it does and why I don't like it, and then I'll change it. But the first two years of the treasurer, I changed just about nothing, unless it was just something I really, really couldn't figure out why they ever did it that way. But someone's just opinion, so just what makes my opinion better than somebody that did it for me is mine, I guess. But, you know, you need consistency, ultimately, the goal of the budget is you should be able to look at the line item and say, oh yeah, this is the line item they always use for X, Y, Z. And it's kind of a game we play in our office, where did we go with that last year's demand? Because some of these, some of these stuff, there's, there's one line item for one bill, but a whole entire year. And some of it's grant term, there's some grants where you have to specifically track their money. So, but yeah, it's a fun game, we usually do it pretty good. Sometimes I'm surprised the ones I remember, usually shock the ones that don't, but it, it, that's just a good job. Unless it's got a lot of experience with budgets too, I mean, maybe your feelings are a little different, but there's roughly twelve or thirteen hundred, somewhere between twelve, thirteen hundred line, individual lines in the budget. Which is a lot. It, it's a lot to keep in your brain, it's a lot to figure out where everything's moving. There's a lot of, there's potential with all, there's quite a few transfers in the budget, approximately twenty. That creates a lot of issues with what, what actually is the funding source, because it's just out of one pocket into the other. So the general fund, an example, there's a transfer of, you know, SIP scratch there, money, part of it in the SIP line item, the SIP fund. There's a transfer in the general fund, the balance over here, because our tax revenue doesn't really fund all of our operations well enough. So the question then, as well as the SIP operating, can it get rid of them, I guess, but maybe it's one portion of it, maybe yes. I don't know.
Could interpret that in different ways.
You could interpret it a lot of different ways, so just as we said, I mean, it kind of goes back to the discussion about the operating versus the projects. You know, I, we could probably sit here and pick, we could probably pick any organization that we've given money to that on paper doesn't look like they have enough revenue to pay for their operations, let them run a project, and then they said they spent all the money on the project, and they sit down, did you? But that's just...
Speak up.
Okay, turn this off. I'm not sure, but yeah, it went off.
That worked.
We are not on the phone. I got it, it's confusing. Okay. So...
So I, I had one other question I wanted to clarify on is in-person interviews.
Can happen, but I got to...
So in, in the past, they've sort of been, people have been given the opportunity, but not required, to come in and actually speak about their project.
Right, and that's been, well, depends, depends which one, there is one, one series of those during the budget committee meetings. And then the other ones in the fall, when you start the projects, don't they have an opportunity to come and talk?
Yeah, but it's not really, yeah, it's, I don't know, not part of June, June and July, I think. But usually, I mean, those aren't scheduled, they're just, on this day, we're talking about something, projects. And again, if people want to be there, they can.
Yeah, they can be.
Some do, some don't.
I mean, my argument about that is, for, for years, it's been too, I'm not a big fan, I'm not a big fan of the dog and pony show, I don't find it particularly instructive. I want to, I would prefer, give me quite a bit of money, I don't see where it's out of the court or the budget committee's purview. Go visit the chow here, see what's going on. I mean, I, I get more from a tour than I do from the ten-minute, oh yeah, or great, give us the money, sales pitch, but it's not as efficient, I mean, it could take a significant amount of time, maybe this is an every other year thing or, I don't know, it's been a non, it's been a non-starter at any rate, because it would, it would take a couple of days.
Well, the other thing too, that I was thinking about that and wrote in my notes last night, is, is that I don't want to, if they don't come, if they can't come, if they're ill, if something happens and they can't make it, I would hate to deny that.
Yeah, they've got one day a year or something to, to make their pitch. And it has happened, we've had people pay conflicts, they just can't come that day, and well, sorry, that's the day of the meeting.
So I guess I'm not hard and fast on whether or not they, I mean, I think it's good for people to come and talk to us, but there are situations where...
So in some people, there's lots of questions, I mean, I don't know, maybe your feeling's different, but they'll have a lot of questions, and some of them, they kind of talk, like, well, we don't even know why you're here, you know? Maybe their application materials are real clear, the, the need for them to speak's decreased.
That's kind of what I'm wondering, is if the, if the application process itself, if it's more rigorous and the staff is really doing due diligence and following up and asking questions that you guys are seeing? I say, if you aren't already assessing out that information, that we would have questions about.
To me, it should either be everybody or nobody, not the hot pot.
Well, I don't know, I don't know, some, I think some of them are different.
Yeah, I think some, well, some people are always an advocate for their cause, whether they need to be or not, and some people shouldn't be in order, so... But everybody, I think, we had, when I started at treasurer, it was everybody, and the budget committee did not like that, because we did not get done until like four in the afternoon, plus they're still trying to get through the budget, it was too much. So if we're gonna do that, it needs to be split, we need to have it over two days or something. And I still think, to me, I still like boots on the ground, but taking tours, I mean, the Roadmaster did that a few years ago, gave us a tour, and that was the best thing ever, because I don't, I don't write for Roadkill County, I don't know where the rocks are. And all I need to look at, you know, all I need to look at is window of shiny equipment, while they're crushing rock, again, look at the bills, and I don't really have any ideas, so, just getting to see everything, but it's not very efficient. Of course, I don't know, if you had everybody drive a condom from Arlington, you got a grant, you added all those hours, I could probably could have driven. I got those quarters. It's like, neither one's very efficient, I guess.
I've sat through a couple of them, and, and a lot of the times, the, the one-on-one meetings for a whole day has been, I don't think necessary.
Yeah, and my, the thing is, when we get to the, the real nugget isn't that stuff at the beginning of the day, the real nugget's the entire budget at the end of the day, and if you spend it, I'm a blind person, right? I get, I'm most productive before about two o'clock in the afternoon. If there's anything I really, really want to do, that's what I'll do, or after about nine o'clock at night. Somewhere in, somewhere in the middle there is, you know, I'm just tired, it's time to eat, it's time to relax a little bit, and so, we, to me, what we spent the last part of the day, hearing, sitting patiently, listening to everybody, but the budget's really the, ultimately what we're there to do, so we expended our energy for the time we get to the part that we actually ought to be focusing on, but that's just me, maybe, so a lot of people aren't only people, so that's okay too.
I mean, I kind of feel like, my sense is that I, I think that I would probably be relying pretty heavily on what the staff, what information the staff pulls together, their recommendations, their, I mean, I, I feel like that's kind of, if we're gonna structure it that way, we're having reviews. I worry about how, if somebody's in front of me, do I become more biased? Because I'm not really comparing the apples to apples anymore. If I'm getting a live presentation and the next funder or the next applicant isn't able to attend, then am I really judging them one-to-one? Whereas if I'm just going off of, this is their application and this is a staff recommendation, I feel like that's a more...
Yeah, I mean, in the bias, I mean, talking to, talking to people when they schedule, you know, they're, the applicants themselves think they're biased, so someone will say, oh, I want to be first, because that's the one they remember, or, oh, I want to be, you know, they've all got their own logic on how they're gonna get the most funding, and I don't know that it pans out, but, but they, they all have these ideas, so... Somebody who eliminated the bias really levels the playing field, ultimately, you know, could, could lead to better results, because we're just trying to make the county a better place, and that's the whole point of it.
Yeah.
Putting taxes, having schools and all this stuff, right, to, to help our citizens be able to interact with the greater world.
Well, in our application process, if our application asks us all the questions that we want answered, and they don't answer them, then, you know, if you can't, if, if they didn't have the wherewithal to actually answer that question that was asked, then are we gonna answer it here in front of us? I mean, that's...
Well, it depends on the person, because some of the, I know one of the entities never comes and speaks, because that person's petrified of public speaking, that's like, and, you know, it's a, is it a disadvantage? I don't know, maybe.
See, I...
But at any rate, even if you, if you wanted them to come and speak on their behalf, they're still not really gonna want to do it, because it's not there. But you've got small entities, there's not, their management's not real deep, you can't, can't curate back that person that's really afraid of public speaking, you send them, talk, can't afford that day, I mean, that person you got's the person you got, so...
See, and my sense would be that if we're asking the staff to rank these for us first, that they're gonna do a level of due diligence, if there's some holes in the application, that that would be part of that initial kind of...
Well, the goal is to have those in or...
Right, I mean, to have those in, and so my idea would be that the real structure would be the staff actually presenting their recommendations to the budget committee, and that people who are applicants are welcome to sit in the audience and, and listen in, obviously, in the public meeting, but that it's really more of an engagement with the staff on, okay, based on the research that you've done, the conversations that you've had, what is your recommendation to us? And people want to pitch us, outside of that, they're welcome to say, here's why my project's really important and why it's not part of the budget. But it's not, not a form... But it's not, not a formal scheduled time for.
And I think during that initial review with the staff or the review team, whatever you want to call it, that's the time to say, hey, I need you to come in and explain this to us so that we, because it's a little unclear. Especially if we're talking to like the sustainability plans, which, you know, you're out. That's, that's the time when they can actually be called up or asked to stop by or.
And then phone call.
But rather than use the budget committee's time.
And using.
I would rather have, and even us looking at this ahead of time and saying, this isn't clear to me. So either the staff can clarify that, or the staff needs to pick up the phone and say, what was this piece? That, you know, one of the budget committee members had a question about this. So it's a less, it's a, it's a more level playing field for everybody, basically.
I mean, if they have a rank, if the budget committee was presented with a ranked, I mean, they've always gotten the applications prior to budget committee meetings. But if they're presented something ranked and have questions, as long as there's sufficient time to contact entity, I don't see why they need to appear.
Yeah, I don't.
I agree. Yeah.
We're 11:30.
Yeah, how are we doing? How are we doing?
I think we're, did you have any more?
Yeah, just real quick, you know, basically, is there, if our plan's still to meet again next week for the work session to kind of finalize these things? As if so, you know, we've got an application including a budget and a match funding form that shows the other folks who put money into it. Get this guide developed out to about three times the size, size, contract, a reporting document, all this kind of eight.
Do it by tomorrow, right?
I, I'd probably, you know, if I come in Friday morning, I could probably have knocked out my name. No. I, I probably, if I could focus on this, maybe, you know, shut my door, turn off my phone for a few days, I could probably get it done for next week. Or it's built out enough to bring back something that you guys can then review and finalize. But I don't know how much time, how far ahead of time I would be able to get it to you.
So here's, I'm going to throw a little winch up there, which is that I'm scheduled to be in Salem on Monday and Tuesday. And then on Thursday, Friday, Saturday. Personally, I will come back if we really want to meet and work on this on Wednesday. But it sounded like with the workload, that we may be getting it like right before anyway. So I'm kind of wondering if, I mean, the next two weeks from now, this, the discussion was going to be business loans. I'm wondering if it's just worth the time to, two weeks from now, the work session goes back to this and we just postpone the business lens a little. The business lens to me is not pressing, I feel like we need to get this right.
We have to.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. And the other thing too, that you maybe we could do is plan that work session on me. You could put that thing on there too, just in case it goes. We can start working on the next one.
So.
Well, we can change the order around. And if you guys want to meet next week, we can jump into such projects and get more time to come back to.
I don't know, I don't understand the same thing.
Or maybe this.
Yeah, I, I think our momentum will, will, will be most effective if we stay, get this done and go on to the next. So could we cancel next week's workshop or work session? The one that we were scheduling for two weeks from now will take the actual documents and kind of put things up. And that would give us enough time to actually put them together, have some time to review and reflect. I think that conversation might be better if we can kind of sit with it a little bit too.
And I, I think that, that next one, two weeks from now, like you were saying, you could add in like special projects for the loan. And so that we can roll into that.
And get moving on it.
And get started on it.
Yeah. Do you guys want to take up special projects next, or do you want to take up business loans?
I don't think special projects.
I think so too.
A lot of what we're designing here will really ease.
Yes.
Okay, so why don't we do that? And then that way, and I will just stay, I will be in Salem all next week for anybody who wants to know where I will be.
We'll all join you.
Asking for, we'll join. It is kind of lunch time, the first, the first couple of days I'll be there asking for some, for some money for Gill County, the legislature. So we have anything else that we feel, I mean, this was, this was a good session, two and a half hours. Is there anything that we thought we needed to revisit? Do you feel like you have enough?
If there's a couple of things that maybe we didn't cover, I'm sure we can get into that next, the second session.
We can, or if we want to at least raise the topic? We can have a half hour to lunch if you're, if you're still with us.
We have how long to run?
Twenty-five minutes.
Okay, well, what if I don't?
Leslie, you see.
Just a bunch of things I, because I wrote a comment on top here, one of the things was I bought like late submissions, you know, whatever you can handle. Anybody?
Late.
Or, you know, and then there was a particular part in here, and I think we already talked about, about the same. That the budget committee final decision was final.
We're going to strike that completely.
So, I guess I think we should do about some of my comments as well.
So to me, like, like submissions are ineligible submissions, deadlines to deadlines, and.
Yeah. Okay.
I mean, I don't, because otherwise, how do you avoid having a role in deadline?
I know, it's hard. But there were, you know, there was a situation last year with, what was it, the basketball thing with Paul Wees.
Oh, and.
And you know, because of the medical, you know.
Right.
Situation's out of that control, they did not make this medal, and so it was, you know, there's, oh, there might be sometimes in extenuating circumstances.
Right, and that's where I, I think some of those other line items, like that one, came out of, ended up coming out of the recreational, county recreational.
Okay, okay.
And so, I mean, there, there is still some of that leeway, there's county recreational, there's county youth activities. So there, there are some that aren't normally part of this that can also be.
Okay. So I just want to make sure that we have a little leeway, so. Okay. I think that was any more questions?
Oh, this is the one you're talking about. The budget committee, the final decision.
I just think that could be.
Anything else?
I don't think so.
Sherry, did you have anything that you don't want to get raised, or that you just want to surface as an issue we need to take up? Okay. Well, then, I will, if there's nothing else, adjourn the work session. And we will, just for everyone's FYI, have a regular meeting, give this room that one off. And then the next session, I will start for February 20th, two weeks from today. And we're going to be held.
They'll need a clear courthouse.
Okay. Okay, saying hi to our Liam, do it again.
Yes.
Yeah.